Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting for the City of Southfield being held on Monday, July 11th at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Present.
Brightwell.
Your.
Cruz.
Present.
Frazier.
Haskins.
Here.
Mandabon.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum. Excuse Councilman Frazier.
Thank you. Would we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I meant to mention this when we were on the phone this afternoon and I totally forgot. I'm wondering if we could have a moment of silence for Perry Dumantle, who served on the Compensation Commission for close to over thirty years. Mr. Dumantle passed away last week.
Yes, and we should also include Lauren Courts, the police officer that passed away in the City of Detroit.
Sure.
So we'll have a moment of silence for both Mr.
Madam President, if I could add on to that, too.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander Jefferson, who was one of the Red Tails that, and I'm sure Mr. Brightwell could talk even more about that, but he was a member of my Alumni Association and Detroit er, but one of the first black pilots in the war, and he passed away at a hundred years old.
Yes, thank you. I'll repeat the names. We're asking for a moment of silence in remembrance of Mr. Perry Dumantle, Mr. Lauren Courts, and Mr. Alexander Jefferson. One moment of silence, please. Thank you all. Next, we have our communications. The City of Southfield has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the City of Southfield City Council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Thank you.
Greg Keeler, Southfield resident. I'm glad that you read the little speech before we spoke. My question is this: When a resident comes up here and speaks, should we receive microaggressions from anybody with a microphone? And does diversity inclusion handle microaggressions? Is that yes or no? For ten years, the council has had meetings where there have been microaggressions against residents who have come to speak with no repercussions. Why? If you have one for us, this should be one for you. Now, on March 21st, 2022, volunteer testing pilot program for residents, water wells, San Marino, ninety-nine homes, council was asked for $60,000 data on water, testing metal PFAS. We need to know if we have PFAS. That is the only way we will know is by testing. For the people to know also, this is a quote from that day. Now, when I brought it up about PFAS, I shouldn't have heard anything, because it didn't come first out of my mouth. When I explained where we should be testing and how we should be testing, you should have either looked into it or went back to Eagle and asked, yes or no? But at any rate, nothing should have been said back to me in any kind of way, shape, form, fashion. And that's not only to us residents that this has been said to, but it's also been said to y'all up there. Because at one point in time, when they were talking about John Grace Arms, I believe one councilperson was told it was too complex for her to know. You asking for money and it's too complex for you to know? No, y'all should have stopped right then and there, and this should have been explained so we could all understand. It should not be anything that's too complex for us not to know. It should be broken down, and if you can't break it down, don't ask. Same thing with the testing. Just because I gave you where it was supposed to be done at and should be done at because of what council had said, where the water had gone from those wells, and I said those were the testing points it should be at, because Eagle would like to have that information as well as part of the data, so they know what's going on. Because you don't know if that water went down our drainage system. And that was one of the things that was brought up. That's why I brought up the points. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Phyllis Kaplan.
Yes, thank you for having me. I'm sorry I didn't put a heading on the calendar, but I had decided in mid-May to record all the times that I was interrupted in my sleep, and I thought I'd give you each a copy of the June. I'm here in reference to the email I sent to the mayor and the city council requesting their consideration to amend and update the noise nuisance ordinance, Title IX, Chapter 113 Police Regulation, and Chapter 111, Article 11, Section 9.11, to include door warning systems, chimes, buzzers, or voice warnings, whether attached to an alarm or not attached. I request that these devices be limited in outside audibility from being used between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. The devices should be limited as to volume and distance of audibility. The device that I am being subjected to is audible at least three hundred or four hundred feet from the source, right to my home, which is at least that distance away, down a hill, through quite a long yard, and located on another street, Riverview Drive. When I reported the noise nuisance to Mayor Cyver on April 18th, he responded quickly and referred the matter to Chief Barron. Chief Barron took immediate action and assigned an officer, Officer Pate. Officer Pate contacted this resident, found out it was not an alarm but chimes, and convinced her to turn it off. It was off for four or five nights, but commenced again with a different voice message and from a different door. The resident has refused to turn that voice message off. I hope amending the ordinance will enable the police to have legal means to deal with the noise nuisance and any others that have developed through the new technology now available. And I hope it's soon, because I'd like to get more than maybe one night of a full rest, hopefully at least once a week, anyway. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I know that this matter was, as the previous speaker mentioned, it was referred to Chief Barron in our police department, and I know that our city attorney has been involved as well, looking over the ordinance. And I believe that the ordinance does not need to be changed, but I'd like the city attorney to make some comments on this, if you don't mind.
Good evening, if I may, Madam Chair. Because this is in the communications period, I know it's best practice not to respond. I will look into it, and I will send an updated memo to council members again to discuss it more, but I'm not prepared to talk about it right now. And since it's communications, it's noted for me to make sure that I get something updated to council tomorrow or the next day.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Olivia Littleton.
Good evening to my mayor and also the city council. My name is Olivia Littleton. I'm a resident of Southfield Sherwood subdivision on Adrian Road. I wrote the mayor a letter about the bad roads. I've been there close to thirty years now, and it's been patch, patch, patch. So I wrote the mayor a letter, and I have copies of this, and I'll leave it with the clerk for each one of you all. And I had three different issues that I wrote him about. But the main issue was about the roads. It says, "Dear Ms. Littleton, I have walked and biked Fillmore, Lathrop, Adrian, and Alta Vesta. These streets certainly need repair. I have asked the city administration to perform spot repair on these streets until we can afford total replacement. The good news is that the city council approved an additional $1 million for concrete spot repair at a recent meeting. It is my hope that repairs can be done before winter." This letter was dated September 8th of 2021, and we're approaching a year, and nothing has been done. I spoke with Mr. Michael about it in June, and he explained to me that that money was already spent. So I'm just hoping that we could find some more money from somewhere to get these repairs done. And I would like to leave a copy so each one of you all could see. And thank you for listening to me. I'm a little nervous. I'm not used to speaking in front of, you know, a crowd of folks, but I had to come because I'm the captain of the block club, and they put everything on me.
Well, thank you for coming. That concludes our communications for this evening. Next, we have our presentation. Our first presentation is from the American Public Works Association, the Project of the Year Award for the Tamarack Creek Stream and Wetland Restoration Project.
Good evening, Your Honorable Badi, Madam President. I'm Brandy Sylacek. I'm the City's Stormwater Manager, and I'm here to present you the National APWA Award for the Project of the Year for the Tamarack Creek Stream and Wetland Restoration Project. I have it physically right here. So this award was given to us at the annual conference this past May. The Michigan Chapter of the American Public Works Association is a nonprofit professional association of public works agencies, companies, and individuals dedicated to promoting professional excellence and public awareness through education, advocacy, and exchange of knowledge. So this award was a competitive award throughout the state. We won in the category of Environment 1 to 5 Million. Our contractor was England Civil, and our consultant was Environmental Consulting and Technology. And I just have a brief presentation to show you some before and after photos and some of the accomplishments that were done with this project. So if you aren't familiar, the project is located just south of Lawrence Tech, the football field right there, on a tributary of the Rouge River, the Tamar Extreme. And the funding for this project was received through a Great Lakes Restoration Initiative grant through the EPA in the amount of just over $2.7 million. There was no match required for this grant, so that was good for us. Our partners on the project were the Alliance of Rouge Communities, who received the grant through the EPA, and obviously the U.S. EPA, and the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Program in the City of Southfield. So conditions prior to the restoration, this project incorporated a part of the stream along the Rouge River, and also a detention basin that was put into place just south of Ten Mile when the lodge freeway went in back in the sixties. That basin was owned by MDOT. So it had completely sedimented in, and phragmities and invasive species came into the system, clogging up, you know, that area, not allowing for stormwater to filter before releasing downstream. And so it was in pretty bad shape. And then downstream conditions were not great as well, because it wasn't holding water in the basin. There was a lot of erosion, which caused issues with infrastructure, and then obviously trees falling into the river and just a very incised, flashy stream bed, which led to loss of fish and wildlife habitat and poor water quality scores downstream. It was one of the most degraded stream reaches within Southfield. So here's some photos. During construction, we removed a bunch of sediment and invasive species within the floodplain area and the basin area, and then realigned the stream, put down some vegetative mats that held the soil in place during the storm events, as well as the seed bank for it to come in in the spring. We also planted trees in this area, so it just showed some of the work done during construction. And then after the restoration, the picture up here to the left shows where that MDOT basin was. So all the phragmities were removed, the sediment removed, and it was replanted, and trees were planted as well. I think we planted over 2,000 shrubs, 500 trees, and thousands and thousands of seeds. And things are coming in pretty well. There are a few bare spots here and there, and the contractor is still under contract to go in and replace the trees that didn't make it and/or the vegetation or seed bank as well. So this project helped to create additional wetland, as well as restoring that basin, wetland habitat, which would manage flooding coming into, or flooding in any rainstorm that comes into the system. And then here's some photos downstream. The stream bank was stabilized, and we put in over twenty habitat structures, like these logs here, either along the stream bank or within the floodplain, wetland areas that provide habitat for native species of wildlife. And this also would help reduce erosion downstream and increase property values as well. And so we're nearing the end of the project itself. We're about ninety percent complete. The contractor, as I mentioned, has to go back and do some final touches and do a couple realignments of the stream itself, but should be done toward the end of the, end of the summer. And so with that, I want to say congratulations for the city winning this award. And, you know, it's a competitive award throughout the state, so we were happy to be able to receive that.
Thank you.
And I have the award. Who wants it? I can take any questions if you want, but I tried to get through that presentation pretty quickly. I know you have a lot on the agenda.
Councilman Brightwell?
Basically, congratulations to you and your team, and everyone who was involved in this. This is just a generic question, just probably for the benefit of me and also the audience. What is the overall goal of this kind of project in restoring this general area? Is it just beautification or edification? I mean, what is it? What's the overall?
Right, so the, good question. And, you know, I've been looking at this project for the past twenty years, so I know, you know, the benefits and stuff. But it's basically to help slow down, you know, stormwater, improve water quality, reduce erosion downstream. And we got funding through the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, because there is a habitat component to it, so it provides habitat for wildlife, bringing in, you know, the native seed, the native plants, the trees, and improving water quality overall. So that, you know, originally the basin, when that was put in place back in the sixties, it was meant to capture the stormwater from, you know, the highway, but then additional drainage area was added to that as we developed to the north. So it got overwhelmed, and this happens a lot in an urban setting. And so, you know, now we require detention basins throughout the city when anyone comes in, and treating the water quality prior to it getting out to the storm system. So this is basically a very large-scale project of what we try to do on individual property sites that are now requirements for, you know, under stormwater requirements through the city. So, long answer short, kind of a long answer there, but hopefully, hopefully that helps.
If it takes that long to answer the question, that's fine.
Okay.
And everyone who heard you, we are more educated now with respect to this. So, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman Mandabon.
Madam President?
Yep.
Madam President, I'd like to just comment. I mean, I think Councilman Brightwell's question is right on mark about stormwater quality, water quality. And this council's done an awful lot in recent developments to address and correct, from, you know, first flush treatments and such. But if Ms. Brandy, if Brandy can touch on the proposed changes to our stormwater ordinance that you've been working with Oakland County and the state has approved, you have those changes, and then we are, we will be bringing forward a request to essentially begin the analysis of a stormwater utility system for the city. And I just want to also comment on the comments that came back. I'd like to ask Brandy, any evidence of PFAS in this system?
So I know that the state has done some testing for PFAS in northern reaches of the Rouge River. It's not as prevalent as it is downstream, and the more industrial areas, that's where they're finding it. The state has gone through, you know, recent testing, and they continue to test. There are, I think there was maybe a few little places found, I want to say Farmington Hills, but I'd have to look at the report again, but not necessarily in this reach here, and north of us, not so much, but mostly downstream.
And I bring this up, Madam President, this has come up frequently as a comment. We have no evidence of PFAS. When we put in place the well testing program, and to this council's credit, you've not, we had roughly 319 people still on wells, and this is about safe drinking water, you know, that potable water that people drink and shower with. So in the last year, you've connected ninety-nine people. You got 220 people left. We have a program that will help them test. What we've seen during my time here is those wells that are failing, or it's usually about E. coli and fecal.
Right.
Count, and it's usually from failed septic systems. Those people who have, those residents who have failed septic systems, and they're also drinking water. I can tell you, the folks at Eagle are really impressed that we actually have a program to help people test. We'll do some random testing for PFAS, but we really have no evidence to believe that, and it keeps coming up in this council chambers. And I don't want people to think that we've got an issue here and intentionally ask the questions. I've seen the reports. We really don't have a problem, and our drinking water is safe. I would like to learn a little bit more about folks who are still on wells. All of those homes who are on wells have access to potable drinking water through the City of Southfield Water System. So you as a city, what we're doing, we're doing all the things that you can do to make sure this is safe. I just struggle when I hear people talking about something and creating a potential that there's a problem, and we're not aware of any problems. The work that has been done in the Rouge corridor the last twenty years, the water's cleaner today than it has been in my lifetime.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think that we just need to be diligent, stay at this, and when those funding opportunities that we work to procure those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandabon?
Brandy, thank you very much for the presentation. The pictures help a lot in looking at the area. And the question I have is, this was done in the sixties, so does that mean we have another fifty, sixty years before this has to be redone again?
Well, good question. You know, we've been working with MDOT. They still own the basin there. So, you know, there's a maintenance plan that we would put into place and ask that they abide by that. And they are doing a lot of different upgrades and changes to their stormwater requirements, and they're required to do it per Eagle requirements as well. So hopefully it will not fill in in the next sixty years, but obviously there's a need to maintain the sediments coming in the system and also maintain some of the invasive species that are coming in. So we're actually doing a treatment of some of the phragmities that have come into the system a little bit during the construction period, which is normal. But once the, you know, native plants take, grow in and take over, the idea is that it's more of a natural system, so it should, not that there's no maintenance required, but it should, you know, grow in and not have the bad plants come back into it.
Okay.
So we'll work with MDOT on a maintenance plan and keep on them with that as well.
And is this an area where people can explore, or is it off limits for people?
It's actually all private property. The partners on these parcels have been great partners, and they're excited about the project, so it is on private property. I mean, if anyone wants to go out and take a tour, feel free to contact me, but I'm assuming once the project gets done, we can do a ribbon cutting ceremony or some sort of celebration, because I've been out there with a couple of the adjacent property owners in the Tamarack group there to just take a look out there. So unfortunately, right now, it's private, so it's not a recreational area.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Madam President, I just wanted to go back, because the word sediment came up. When we start talking about maintenance, and as a new ordinance comes in front of council, it's going to be maintenance and sediment control.
Right.
Are the, that's going to be your large issue, and how we manage that as an organization?
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation. I'm really glad to see the progress that you made, as it kind of speaks to, in my mind, the sustainability of Southfield and environmental perspective and so forth. And so I think that's very positive for us as a city. I have one, just a little question, though.
Okay.
Because I didn't know, I don't know this terminology, and I'd like to know. Sedimentation? Was that?
So that's basically when, like, the stream bank is eroding, or any debris on the roadway comes into the system and leaves just a bunch of dirt. Basically, that's what it is, so.
Okay.
It just kind of fills in, and over the sixty years of, you know, runoff and stuff from the roads, the sediment comes into that system and, you know, fills in the basin or the areas throughout this whole area. A lot of times when we do developments, you know, commercial development requires stormwater management, and as Fred had mentioned earlier, or Mr. Warren, had mentioned earlier that, you know, we're doing new stormwater requirements. This would require infiltration type of techniques, like a rain garden or bioswale that filters out the sediments prior to it getting into the storm system. So that helps improve infrastructure, maintain our system. So those are newer requirements, although we've always allowed people to do that, and so that should help with the condition of infrastructure moving forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear that I knew what it was.
Sure, yeah.
But, you know, again, the project looks like it's done very well, so thank you for your presentation tonight.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I'd also like to say congratulations. Looks like a lot of work was accomplished. But you mentioned that this was private property. So, will the owners of that property be working with you to maintain this over the years, since this is private property?
Yes, so, as I mentioned, M.DOT owns that basin. That property owner's a little bit easier to work with, you know, because we work with them and we have a relationship with them. So, we will, you know, give them a maintenance plan on what should be done to maintain. And actually, that's kind of like the, the basin area is the part that really does need to be maintained in order for it to function as a storm water feature. You know, the rest of the floodplain area, the plants and the trees should come in and grow in and basically maintain, ultimately maintain itself. I mean, there can be some erosion that happens and stuff like that. Unless we have a major catastrophe type of a storm, the system should hold up for years and years. I mean, I think the biggest issue we probably have on some of the private property areas would be with invasive species coming into the system, like the phragmites and the weeds and the not good, not so good plants. And, you know, doing treatments, spot treatments of those types of things that come into the storm system and into the floodplain. But we will work with the property owners to give them a plan of what they should do and what they should look out for. Now, the contractor is still under contract for the next year or two through the next season to make sure the invasive species don't come in prior to, you know, all of the regular vegetation coming in and making sure the plant, the trees survive. So, we do have a year or two of just regular maintenance by the contractor. But after that, long story short, the property owner is responsible for maintaining it. You know, just like if we're doing a road project and we plant trees and/or turf after the fact, we have to, you know, the property owner is required to maintain that. In a natural area, sometimes it, you don't see it, so it doesn't get as much focus on it, I guess. But the property owner, who owns a majority of the area, is the Nolan Realty Company, and they are very excited about the project. They've, are very happy with what, how it's turned out. And I'm hoping that they continue to, you know, maintain and take a look at the property. And, you know, I would offer to provide them advice, at least to go out and take a look. But, sorry, that was kind of a long answer.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. A great presentation, and congratulations.
Thanks. Thank you.
Next, we'll have our public hearings and site plan. The first item is the Economic Development Initiative. We have a public hearing on establishment of the Commercial Rehabilitation District under Public Act Two Ten of two thousand and five as amended, the Nine Mile Road Commercial Rehabilitation District Number One.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Madam President, Honorable Board, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have four examples of reinvestment in the City of Southfield. We're very excited about our community looking to maintain and upgrade our existing buildings. The first item, and if, David, would you like to join me, from Contour Companies, he is responsible for three of our major initiatives tonight. We're looking to have a public hearing to establish the commercial district under P.A. Two Ten, as requested by sixteen-two-hundred West Nine Mile LLC, at sixteen-two-hundred to sixteen-two-hundred-and-ten West Nine Mile. We have a short presentation, and after that, we'd like to hold a public hearing for the first item, close that out, and if that's approved, open a public hearing for the second item. And so, David, would you like to give a short presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel. My name is David Dedvuka. I am here representing Contour Companies, requesting a P.A. Two Ten for the atrium apartments, better known as the Adana on Nine Mile. The atrium is a two, two-building, four-story complex, ninety-six units total. We acquired the property just a little over two years ago. We're in the process of a heavy renovation. All new roofing, mechanical systems, windows, doors, interiors will be done, and we anticipate completion this fall of two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you.
These are some current photos.
As was mentioned, they're making a four-point-seven million dollar investment in the property. They, the Contour Companies will still continue to pay taxes on the land and the current value of the property if this is approved. At this time, that concludes our short presentation, unless you have any questions, or if you'd like to open the public hearing.
Yes. This is a public hearing for the establishment of the Commercial Rehabilitation District under Public Act Two Ten. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this topic, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Are we prepared to vote?
Madam Chair?
Madam President?
Go ahead.
I'd like to move that we approve the Economic Development Initiative, Public Act Two Ten, on Nine Mile Road Commercial Rehabilitation District Number One.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of the Rehabilitation District under Public Act Two Ten of two thousand and five as amended for the Nine Mile Road Commercial Rehabilitation District Number One. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is to seek, we're seeking approval for their application that would be placed in this district. I would like to remind City Council that the company will be signing an agreement stating that if they don't fulfill their obligations, it could, the exemption would go away. So, they have a responsibility to fulfill the obligations that they're putting forward.
Thank you.
And so, if we could have a public hearing, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
This, too, is a public hearing. I'd like to now declare the public hearing open for the approval of the application for sixteen-two-hundred West Nine Mile Road for Associates LLC. If there's anyone here that would care to speak to this topic, please come forward. Again, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, any questions or comments? Councilman Brightwell?
I see that we are currently collecting approximately eighty thousand in taxes. So, we will continue to collect that during the duration of this P.A. Two Ten.
That's correct. So, our city assessors here as well, if there's any more detail. But they will go out and do an evaluation each year on the property, and then after year five, the property will be reassessed to the new value. But they will continue to pay the taxes.
Okay, at the current rate?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Is this for five years or ten years? I'm seeing two numbers here.
Sure. The tool, the state act allows us to go to ten years. However, with past practice with the Southfield City Council, we agreed that we would offer five years, allowing the owner to come back in year five to request an additional five years. Should City Council agree to grant that, then we would go forward. And we have criteria to allow them the extra years, and that the criteria is that they would have fulfilled their obligations and, I believe, make a continuous investment in the property, a continued investment in the property. So, fulfill prior obligations and then future investment. That would trigger if City Council were to choose to go for another five years. And again, that would be up to the City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Counsel, are we prepared to vote? Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the application from sixteen-two-hundred West Nine Mile Associates for a Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate under P.A. Two Ten of two thousand and five as amended.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the application that's presented before us for sixteen-two-hundred West Nine Mile Road Associates LLC. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a request for Park at Trowbridge for the same tool. They are asking for five years exemption of the personal property at two-four-one-one-one Civic Center Drive. The first item would be to request the establishment of a district, and then, as the same practice, if that's approved, to have a second public hearing to approve their request. And we have a short presentation.
Thank you. The Park at Trowbridge is a eight-story, former senior facility that we rezoned and had a consent judgment a few months ago to establish that it's a fifty-five and over community. Existing units are two-hundred-and-ninety-eight. Our renovation budget right now is just under fourteen million dollars. And we've accomplished around six million in renovations so far with new HVAC systems, new windows and doors going in, and we plan to complete this project by summer of twenty-three. Additionally, we are planning to add an additional sixteen units to the complex.
As it stated, this project is underway. The state allows for a six-month timeframe in which the project can start, and they can come and ask for the request. Again, we, the City Council, if they choose to set up the district and approve it, we also have to get sign-off by Oakland County Board of Commissioners, and then a package is sent to the State of Michigan, the State Treasurer's Office, for them to get final approval of the project. We have some photos of the existing conditions. So, it needs a lot of work. But it, I have seen a few of the new units, and they're absolutely beautiful. That concludes our presentation.
But they didn't include any of the new units?
No.
No, not yet, no.
Okay. This is a public hearing. I'll now declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to this topic, please come forward now. And this is for the establishment of the Commercial Rehabilitation District Number Two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Honorable Board, Mayor, I'm Dr. Wendy Webster Jackson. I have a couple of comments and questions. So, this was previously a senior building. So, have all of the, so all the previous tenants are gone at this point?
Please address all questions to the council.
I'm sorry. So, are all the previous tenants gone? And number two, if they're going to continue with seniors, is it going to increase it till it provides a hardship for the seniors that stay? Or, you know, how much is the rent going to go up, or who are they trying to attract to these buildings now with the renovations? So, that's the questions I want to ask. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your questions. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, I did have just kind of similar question to my resident. They came here because it did say former senior living, and so I just want to be clear on where we're going with this after the renovations and so forth.
A fifty-five and over community, strictly fifty-five, strictly fifty-five and over. So, it's an independent fifty-five and over community.
Oh, okay, okay. Gotcha. That was the only question I had, Madam President.
Councilman Brightwell?
I visited this facility, and I think I visited it when they were making a presentation to the residents. And we got, I had a little tour, and clearly, this building is in need of work. And I, you know, I use that term lightly. But I guess I'm saying, I'm all for this particular project, and I would like to see it go forward. And I think the thirteen million dollar investment will serve the city and the residents quite well, and serve the building quite well also. So, with respect to that, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Can we answer the question that the previous speaker asked?
Yeah. No, we have not vacated the entire building. There's still tenants living in there.
And then what will happen to those residents that presently have assistants helping them daily?
As far as, in which respect?
Like if nurses come in and out of the rooms, et cetera?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If nurses or aides come to assist the people, since this is going to be completely independent?
They'll still have access to the unit. So, that's, that'll be on the tenant, the existing tenants or the future tenants, if they need that. We won't provide that.
Okay, so they will not be, yes, to leave the complex?
No, no.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Mandelbaum?
What is the difference between a senior complex and a fifty-five and over?
So, originally, the existing judgment back in the eighties and through the existing times was a, there was nurses in the facility, there was food establishment in the facility. Now, it's independent living, so fifty-five and over, but for an independent crowd. We won't provide the food aspect. We won't provide the skilled nursing facility, because we're not a skilled nursing practice organization. We don't have, hold the licensing to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, you need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to move that we establish a Commercial Rehabilitation District under Public Act Two Ten of two thousand and five as amended at Civic Center Drive, Commercial Rehabilitation District Number Two.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of, to establish the Commercial Rehabilitation District under Public Act Two Ten of two thousand and five as amended for the Civic Center Drive Commercial Rehabilitation District Number Two. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is, again, for the application for Park at Trowbridge Associates LLC's application for this district. And I do, once again, want to state that they will be signing an agreement stating that they will fulfill their obligations that were presented. And should they not, then this agreement would go away. So...
This, I was going to say, this is a public hearing.
Madam President, before you open up for this point of emphasis, will, as the individuals that are speaking in the public hearing, they do need to note their name and address for public hearings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to this topic, please come forward at this time, and please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Just a quick question. Are we keeping the name, the Park at Trowbridge, or is there going to be a name change?
I think we'll keep the name.
Okay.
Councilman Brightwell?
I have a question, but I think I know the answer. Are taxes and water bills all paid up at this current moment?
Yes, yes, I believe so.
Okay. Madam Chair, if you, if you wish, I would like to start making motion?
Yes.
I move. Okay. I move for the, I move that we approve the application for the Park- for the Park at Trowbridge Associates LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate under P A two ten of two thousand and five as amended.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the application from Park at Trowbridge Associates LLC for the Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate under P A two ten of two thousand and five as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Now we are moving into two brownfield projects that we have. Again, Contour Companies is seeking to purchase the McKinley School and they have a plan to make a major investment and build additional units. We have a short presentation that we can go over now.
Thank you, Shelley. So the McKinley School is a historic, closed-down unfortunately, Tudor building that has huge potential. Our plan is to convert the existing building into eighteen condominiums. Around the existing building, we also plan to build twenty more duplex condominiums in the same style and fashion with the Tudor look. Our investment is just under eleven million dollars in the construction development. There is a cleanup, there is some water sewer fees that we're looking to be reimbursed and some demolition as well. We would plan to start the development this fall and be complete by twenty-four, summer of twenty twenty-four.
Sure. Good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Samantha Simmer. I'm the Vice President of Economic Development Services with A K T Peerless. We have reviewed the brownfield plan on behalf of the Southfield Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and find the plan in compliance with all the statutory provisions as well as the Southfield Brownfield Redevelopment Authority policies and procedures. It is phased in over a couple of years till the twenty twenty-four when the property becomes fully valued. And, you know, we believe it's a good opportunity for the community to reinvest into this property.
Thank you.
Again, we would be entering into a redevelopment and reimbursement agreement with Contour should this project, when a project moves forward.
Mm-hmm. I was going to say, is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. This is also a public hearing. I'd like to declare the public hearing open for the brownfield redevelopment plan and the reimbursement agreement from McKinley Development Associates LLC. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please come to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Dr. Wendy Webster Jackson, two four nine nine zero San Moise Trail. I was reading this and under my review, now it says that at the current time it has asbestos-containing materials and lead-based paint. Well, unfortunately, I guess the children are gone from the school, so that's one issue. But I was wondering, so we're going to make sure that everything is tested thoroughly because it would be a tragedy if people come in? Because we see that it actually has these very serious cancer-causing ingredients, I mean, well, materials in the system. And also, what, what is the price point for these? Because it looks like they're going to be, are they going to be for rent? Or are these going to be the condo styles? I don't see that in this presentation, so I was curious about that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will now declare the public hearing closed. Counsel?
Yes.
Councilman Cruz?
Well, I would definitely want to hear a response to our resident that just spoke to those questions. And, you know, all I want, oh, go ahead.
If you'd like, we could have the developer talk about the redevelopment of the property and the price points right now.
Sure, sure. So it is not for rent, it is a for-sale product. The, the price would be starting in the high three hundred thousands. We think the market could handle it. We also believe that the city of Southfield is in very much need of a new product, especially a for-sale product. And this beautiful, you see the renderings here, I mean, you can't find that anywhere else. And the historic factors of the site, I think, complement that with the busy intersection of Southfield and Ten Mile and accessibility to the lodge and everywhere else in the city. It's a great location for that. So we believe that the market can handle that.
Maybe talk about the development and how the contamination will be?
Yeah, so, I mean, with the brownfield approval, we will have funds to do the asbestos cleanup and all other cleanup that's necessary. We've already engaged different groups for the cleanup. We've done testing, we've done a phase one and a phase two, and we plan to do that first.
And many of the older properties that are in the community at the time were built utilizing lead-based paint and asbestos. It was common practice during those times when these properties were built. But just because those things are in existence doesn't mean that they are a hazard per se at the time, they would be most likely covered up or not, not causing an issue during the time. So, but all of that would be remediated during this process, definitely.
So you said, I'm sorry, just to go back to what you were saying, Dave, three hundred thousand?
We'd be starting in the high threes.
What's the square footage of?
They're about eighteen hundred square feet. The new construction buildings are eighteen hundred. The ones inside the existing building range from, I think, nine hundred to fourteen hundred.
Had there been any more talks with the residents in Washington Heights?
I think we have, we've had numerous conversations. The mayor has as well. We were approved for a historic, we were designated as a historic district also. So I think we've had a lot of support in the last few months about the project. I think this is the way to go. You don't want a blighted school. Yes, there's asbestos, but I think the worst thing that could happen is something to go happen inside the school, you know, after hours. We've had windows broken, so it doesn't help the community sitting and being vacant the way it is now. So we're excited to start the project as soon as possible.
Okay. Because I just, only reason I ask is because I know that many of the residents have some concerns about traffic control coming through there, that it was going to be too congested and so forth. So I just wanted to make sure we were communicating with the residents in that area and so forth. And the trailers, I don't know, I haven't been by there lately, but that were out there. Are they gone, they're going to be gone?
They will be, yes, they will be removed and abated the proper way.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. You know, I, I think this is a great project and the area definitely is ripe for redevelopment. The one question I had, you said it's going to be completed by the summer of twenty-four. Is that the, not just the cleanup, but the entire redevelopment? All the townhomes and, and the part, and the actual school building?
Yeah, that's, that is the plan. I mean, we're facing delays on, you know, many aspects of supply chains, but that is the plan.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Rochelle, what is the mechanism for reimbursement, I mean, excuse me, for determining what is eligible to be reimbursed?
Sure, so the state outlines all the eligible items. So if you think about a brownfield, it's leveling the playing field between a green, brand-new, fresh site and a site that has functionally obsolete or blighted property. Those impediments that can cause an issue with a project, those are typically the items that would be considered to be eligible items. So any site improvements, like leveling the land or removing the contaminants, those types of things. And then that underground infrastructure for stormwater would also be eligible.
Okay, is there an entity that says, yes, this is eligible? Are we relying on, what are we relying on to make something eligible?
Well, the state law, it determines what is eligible.
Okay, the state law says that, I'm trying to get at, you know, it's the old phrase, trust but verify. You know, so who looks at and makes sure they?
A K T Peerless is a consultant on our behalf.
Okay.
And so we work with them. And as the invoices come in, they verify that all the work is done properly and that they've gotten the best prices for the items that they're working on. And as a company would pay their taxes, that's how they're reimbursed slowly over the years to, until they achieve the amount that they've put into the project for the eligible items.
Okay.
And then the city will collect an additional five years of taxes that we can reuse. And the next item is an item where we'll be looking to reuse those dollars that we've been storing up in our own fund. So it's all monitored. And again, we have an agreement that they have to fulfill their obligations in order to move forward with the project.
Okay, you answered the question, you hit the nail on the head. Okay, thank you.
If I may, Madam President?
Yes.
This is the approval of the brownfield plan. There will be another stage for the brownfield reimbursement development agreement, which will come to council. That will detail that process more. In addition to the steps that Ms. Freeman outlined, we also have the brownfield board that has to approve those invoices as they're submitted. So one of the final actions of the brownfield authority is to approve all eligible expenses. Then it's just a matter of, as the annual increment comes in, those eligible expenses are reimbursed as that increment comes in. But all of the quantities of materials, how they're disposed of, where they're disposed of, those are all monitored and tracked as well.
For all of our projects.
Okay.
I just have, I just have one last question, sorry. I was just wondering about the parking. Is it covered parking?
So the, the existing townhouse will have port garages and the, the new development, the new side of it, will have two-car garages indoors, yeah.
Yeah, I forgot, it's been a while since we saw this the first time, I think, so. All right, that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the brownfield redevelopment plan and its tax increment financing plan and a development reimbursement agreement for the McKinley Development Associates LLC for McKinley Place at eighteen three hundred Washington Drive.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve the brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing plan and the development and reimbursement agreement for the McKinley Development Associates LLC for McKinley Place at eighteen three hundred Washington Drive. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Our next item, and the consultant representing the Southfield nonprofit is here, is the John Grace Arms. Again, this is another wonderful example of the reuse of one of the elementary schools in the city of Southfield. And this is a very exciting project as well. Anne Ryan, would you like to share information about your project?
Sure, thanks. Good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Ryan Higuchi. I work for PM Environmental, a consultant on the project, working with Fred and the mayor on this redevelopment of the school. The developer is the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation. They were founded in nineteen seventy-three and they're committed to providing access to affordable, quality housing to seniors as well as income-eligible families. They maintain four communities within the city of Southfield and they manage over five hundred residential units. This project in particular is one parcel of over four and a half acres. It was originally constructed as a John Grace School in twenty-one, nineteen twenty-one, and it's operated as such until about nineteen eighty. And then it was kind of repurposed and reused as a community center, library, and daycare until about twenty seventeen until it became vacant, and it's been vacant since. A phase one was done on the property when they found no issues with environmental or anything like that in its history. And it has been deemed as functional obsolete by a Michigan Master Assessor Officer back in May. So the renovation includes twenty-five hundred, twenty-five thousand nine hundred square-foot building. They're going to go through and they're going to construct an additional forty-three thousand square feet and some change that matches the existing facade of the building. And it's going to create sixty senior-living apartments that are comprised of fifty-one, fifty-one one-bedroom units and two, nine two-bedroom units. They'll be reserved for residents that earn sixty percent of the area mean income. And thirty-three of those units are going to be reserved for residents that were, that have less than thirty percent of the area mean income. It's going to have a library and a community space that's going to be open for not only the residents but the surrounding neighborhood. It includes improvements to parking lots, sidewalks, landscaping, creation of a courtyard. The existing building will undergo the renovations to meet the modern demands of today's living and the utilization of energy-efficient materials with the intent of going after a National Green Building Silver Certification. Here's a quick look of the, kind of a rendering of how the layout of the plan is going to be with the existing building there to the left and to the right, the addition that's going to be put onto it with the park over there on the right. So it's eligible for brownfield as a functionally obsolete property. As I mentioned before, that it was deemed as such by a Michigan Master Assessor Officer. The internal demolitions of the existing building is going to be about two hundred thousand dollars. And then the asbestos abatement activities, because the building is so old, is going to be about one point two million dollars to abate all the asbestos. There's no tax increment revenue that's going to be requested in this plan. It's kind of a different plan. Instead, they're requesting a million dollars from the eligible costs to be reimbursed from the Southfield Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, local brownfield redevelopment fund. And that's my presentation.
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
So again, this property, as an old school, did contain asbestos. The Oakland County Michigan Works, Southfield Office, as well as other activities, were taking place in this building after it closed as a school. The city did regular monitoring of the space and any maintenance that might have come up was taken care of to ensure the safety of the staff that was utilizing the building at the time. And like we mentioned, many of the old properties did contain these building materials, but they were encapsulated in this building, causing no issue or exposure to the staff that were utilizing the space. And the funds that we've been collecting over the years on different projects were set aside so that we could make new investments in other properties in the city as well as do demolition around the city or do other kinds of testing to encourage redevelopment. So just wanted to assure everybody that everyone was safe when they were in the building. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this too is a public hearing. I'll now declare this public hearing open for the brownfield redevelopment plan and request for local brownfield revolving funds for John Grace Arms, two one oh three oh Indian, Southfield, Michigan. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to this topic, please come forward now. Okay, seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, do we have, Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a very exciting project. I had the privilege of touring this building and seeing the state it's in. It's definitely good that we're doing something with it. It's something that we desperately need here in the city, as we talked about in many council meetings about the need for senior housing here. So my question is, the completion, when, do we have an ETA and when this will be completed?
We'll defer to the nonprofit.
If I may, just, just a quick recap. The prop, the school is still owned by the city. It's under option for the nonprofit to acquire it. When we did that back in December of twenty-one, we had informed council that we would be preparing a tax credit application for the spring submittal to the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. We did in fact do that. We scored very well, but we did not quite make the grade. I believe we're about two points shy of where we needed to be. That's not uncommon. These projects often have to go through, you know, one, two, three submittals. And I've said to council, what happened in twenty fourteen? Getting both McDowell Towers and River Park Place funded at the same time? I was not expecting that. And so we were very fortunate. So on this project, we're evaluating. We think there are some additional points that can be picked up in the Green Score application as well as the nonprofit bringing a larger equity contribution to the deal enough to push our annual allocation. Those tax credits, the state of Michigan gets about fifteen million a year. We would be asking pro- We would be asking probably for about 1.4 million a year for, for the next 10 years. So we need to, we're going to regroup and resubmit our application. We would like to have the Brownfield Plan approved, as well as continue to pursue the million-dollar grant from the revolving loan fund. If you recall, when this item was presented to you in December, I think it was December 13 of '21, you know, I basically outlined to this, the council, we'd give this a couple cracks, we'd apply two, three times, and then evaluate. From my position, if something doesn't happen, we're probably looking at a demolition in the future, so the Brownfield Plan would have a benefit there. The site, there is no tax increment. If you recall, council previously approved a pilot ordinance for this project. A payment in lieu of taxes will come to the city probably around 24,000. Let me say 20 to 24,000 a year is what I would estimate that pilot to be, to, to the city and all the other taxing jurisdictions. You know, so we're regrouping and we're going to resubmit the application. And I've had about a half dozen conversations the last couple of weeks on this, and I know we're preparing to even have some dialogue with Oakland County as they've recently revamped a number of their community development block grant tools. So we're, you know, we're still at it, but I, I still would like to see the Brownfield Plan because we could show that as one more commitment.
And I would just like to add that we would also be entering a reimbursement agreement with the nonprofit when this moves forward. Again, all of the same practices will be utilized. They would pay for the funds upfront, and they would be reimbursed through the grant after the project is complete. And they would have to follow all the same standards that all of our other projects follow, in terms of monitoring.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, I just wanted to know in terms of what you, qualifying as senior living, is that also 50 and over? Do you have a different age group that you work with? I just want to make sure.
It's 55, the same rules that we use as McDonald Towers, River Park Place, market rent. And we are, look, the, the original plan, as we submitted, had 33 units that would be subsidized. In other words, there would be Section 8, an individual maybe with, you know, I'll use McDonald Towers, River Park Place, our median income is just under $900 a month, so they're paying 30% of their income or $300 a month rent. And for our seniors, that's probably the most prized housing opportunity you can get when you can offer an income-eligible rent assistance.
Sure. Okay.
And we'll continue to look at other ways to expand that. I mean, we're fortunate at McDonald Towers, River Park Place, Woodbridge, that we have, Woodbridge is 100% Section 8. The other properties are about 98% are covered with Section 8 vouchers.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what, I'm glad to hear that. I mean, I think that we need to.
No, as, as Councilman Hoskins says, affordable housing is going to be a larger issue for Southeastern Michigan, our seniors. I think it's, it's going to be the, the next mega issue for, for the country in the next 20 years.
I think all of us up here would agree with that, that, you know, not only do we want to attract younger people to our city, which we definitely do, we still want to make sure that we continue to grow places for our seniors as well, in an affordable fashion. So it sounds great to me. I like the plan. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel, are we prepared?
Well, Madam Chair?
Okay.
I move that we approve the Brownfield Development Plan and request for assessing funds from local Brownfield Recovering Fund.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and request for local Brownfield Revolving Funds, John Grace Arms, 21030 Indian, Southfield, Michigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just noticed an error in item E, a small error. The correct address is 18330, not 300.
330.
So I don't know if that needs to be removed, remotioned?
I'll defer to our clerk and legal. Do we need to restate our?
We can, Madam Chair, we can amend the motion to include the correct address.
Okay. It was made by Councilman Brightwell and seconded by Councilman Mandelbaum. So Councilman Brightwell, would you amend your?
Yes, well, I will amend the motion to include the correct address, which is 18330 Washington Drive.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the amendment to our Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan and Development Reimbursement Agreement for the McKinley Place at 18330 Washington Drive.
It's George Washington.
I'm sorry. George Washington.
Sorry.
That's another correction. George Washington Drive.
Okay. All right. Well, Robert's Rules of Order definitely in play. I amend my motion to include the correct address, which is 18330 George Washington Drive.
Are we sure that's it?
Yes.
All right. Support.
Again, it's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the amendment of the address to 18330 George Washington Drive as presented tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mayor. Our next, we have an ordinance to enact. Counsel?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1754, Animals.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Hoskins, to enact ordinance number 1754. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now brings us to the agenda items for discussion and/or action. And our first item is the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce Golf Outing, the 50/50 raffle for Michigan Lottery Charitable Gaming License Resolution.
Madam President, we do have a rather routine item that we've had every year, with the exception of COVID. The Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce did submit a packet for the 50/50 raffle with the Michigan Lottery Charity Gaming License Resolution. It's a raffle that they would like to do during their golf outing. Again, this is something that we approve on a annual basis. We do have the president of the Chamber of Commerce here to address any questions that the council may have this evening. However, I just want to reiterate, it's, it's a standard item that we normally do. Thank you.
Okay. Did you have any comments or anything you'd like to add to what's already been said?
I do not. She did a great job. But if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Do we have any questions? Okay. Councilman Mandelbaum?
When, when is the raffle and how can someone buy tickets?
The raffle will take place on Monday, August the 15th. Our golf outing is at Plum Hollow Country Club. You can purchase tickets by coming to the golf outing and participating, and we'd love to invite all ears here to join us. Of course, the funds are to support the small business community in Southfield. We are fundraising for operational costs, and like she said, it happens every year.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel?
Madam Chair, I have, I have an additional question.
Oh, sure.
What's the approximate amount of money that's brought in from this outing?
From the 50/50 raffle alone?
Yes.
Last year, it was about $1,000.
How much?
About $1,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counsel?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce Golf Outing 50/50 Raffle Gaming Resolution, Gaming License Resolution.
Oh, support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce Golf Outing 50/50 Raffle, Michigan Lottery Charitable Gaming License Resolution as presented tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Next, we have the authorization to purchase and install air conditioner units in the Police Department.
Good evening, members of council, elected officials. Chief Elvin Van for the record. With me, I do have my team, starting with Detective Dan Reston, who oversees our training coordination, and also Director Meredith Morgan, who oversees our Communications and Records Department. So the Police Department is requesting authorization to purchase and install air conditioning units for both our firing range and our communications section. The respective deputy chiefs, we've all looked at this, we understand it's something that we need for our department, particularly as relates to the functionality of our equipment and the conditions in, in our facility for our personnel. We put this item out for bid. Four vendors were interested. Out of the four, Dean Dupless, Heating and Cooling Specialist came out on top, where for the police range, $9,835 was the price, and the dispatch center, $9,685 was the price. The area that we're going to use to purchase the equipment is through, for the Police Department, the Police Department Building Improvement Fund, and for the communications section, the Communications Improvement Fund. But before we move into the next item, we'll call up Detective Reston, who will talk about his area of responsibility and the need for the unit.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, honorable members. Our two armories that house all of the department firearms have a separate AC unit that keeps both of those armories at a temperature and humidity level that will prevent the barrels and other internal components of the rifles from rusting, corroding, and having other issues with the springs. That AC unit's 22 years old. It's been serviced probably, you know, between five and 10 times in the last four years. It's well beyond its usable life, and the companies that have looked at it have said it's a cheaper, more rational decision at this point to just simply replace the air conditioning unit and hopefully get a couple more decades out of that new unit.
Thank you, Detective. And Communications Director Morgan.
Good evening, honorable body. So the dispatch center does not currently have its own cooling system. We're dependent on the system that heats and cools the entire building. Over the years, that has become less dependable, and for the years that I've been there, we go through spells where it's very hot in that room, and we have lots of computers and technological equipment, as you know, which is very sensitive to temperature and temperature changes. So we requested that we be allowed to install our own air conditioning units so that we can keep the temperature at a level that protects that equipment.
So the total cost of both the equipments will be $19,520, and with that, we'll open up the floor for any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Will these units be installed on top of the roof? Or, I mean, since we're doing individual areas, where are they going to be installed?
I think Director Morgan can speak more specifically to the dispatch one. Ours is an existing unit in the underground, I'm sorry, the Police Department. So in our public, on our secure underground, just outside of our range, adjacent to a concrete wall, we have the condenser unit, and then there's ductwork that goes from that unit into these respective two rooms. So that one's entirely enclosed. There's, and there's no, there's no concerns with that. It's, it's able to be run in a safe manner indoors.
Thank you.
Yes, our, because the dispatch center is located on the second floor, our unit would be out on, on the roof of the building.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I definitely see the need for this improvement. Have we used this vendor before?
That, I'm not aware of. Are you aware of this vendor at all?
I believe so, but I wouldn't want to.
Yeah, not in my timeframe. It may predate me, but I'm not aware of reuses before, at least the last three years.
Be a better question for purchasing.
Right.
I just want to, wasn't that real comfortable with this vendor? That's all that, that's the reason I'm asking that, because I think you guys have a very sensitive job, so I don't want us to spend a lot of money on something, and then the next thing you know, we are having to, you know, repair it or whatever. It's, this company was vetted from a standpoint of being reliable, do good work, and, and I'm a, that's, in, in answer, that's a question. I'm just trying to get at the reliability of this company.
Gosh. So, I mean, I know Detective Snook, who does all of our kind of facilities-related coordination stuff, sorry again, I can yell louder if you want to. He, he has a set group of vendors that he'll use and work with, purchasing department, to, to do that. So I have every faith in him. That specific question, I didn't come here with the answer to that, if we've used them, but I'm, yeah, sorry. Hope that answers.
Right. And then the process is what it is, as far as the bid goes out, and then, you know, these companies are vetted for quality before we get to the point where we offer them the opportunity to look at our product. So I think we could be confident it'll be a good selection.
Okay. All right. Well, I won't beat that to death. I do realize we do, we do have recourse if things go bad.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Along the similar lines that Councilman Brightwell asked, do, will the employees that are putting the system in, do they, are those employees vetted because of the sensitivity of your, of where they're working?
Yeah, so a couple of things that happen. Anytime we bring in someone from the outside to work in our facility, due to the nature of sensitivity, particularly in our dispatch center and our training division, we assign a member or members, depending on how much area, to monitor them at all time. They're never unattended in these spaces. And so, but with that, we do do a level of screening as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Where is this company located?
That's not included.
Well, is it a Michigan-based company?
It's Michigan-based. We don't know the city.
It's a local company.
Okay. And to the city administrator, we usually have like the city and the state of our vendors, or for the most part, and can we just have that in the future going forward? When we list a vendor, what city and state are they located at?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Counsel?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the purchase and installation of air conditioning units in the Police Department.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve the authorization to purchase and install the air conditioner units in the Police Department as presented tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Next, we have the Amendment Resolution Number 2022.114, the authorization to pay traffic services, truck invoice at increased price.
Yes, City Council members, I appreciate the opportunity. I'd like to also introduce the supervisor for the motor pool, Kevin Clark, who can answer any specific questions. There we go. This is the fourth time we've come to you regarding this item. It's just unfortunately due to the series of increases for vehicles. It's just unfortunately due to the series of increases for vehicles. Dahmler is now requiring a twenty-nine-hundred-dollar additional charge for the vehicle, and we are asking the City Council, since we've already taken delivery and transferred the truck to the bodybuilder, that the City Council amends its original authorization by twenty-nine-hundred dollars to cover the additional costs.
Okay. Councilwoman Banks?
I'm not sure if I understand this. I know the last time when this was brought forward, I, I thought this council had said, are we going to sign paperwork that both parties agree on the price? And it just seems like it just keeps increasing, increasing, increasing. I don't understand.
Well, unfortunately, it was a misunderstanding on the city's part in December that there was a twenty-nine-hundred-dollar surcharge, and so when the last time they came to you folks for approval, it was not included. It was discovered after, and in order to finalize the delivery, we are responsible for the twenty-nine-hundred dollars.
So that brings the total to what?
I believe it's two hundred and. Yeah, is two hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And mind you, that's only about a point five percent increase.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And, and I, I just wanted to say something on behalf of, I will vouch for this, this, this truck. I visited the Public Works Building, and they gave me a grand, a grand overview and a grand tour of this vehicle and the necessity for it, and what is being, why so critical to have this particular vehicle? And obviously, I was concerned about the, the cost of the vehicle, but it is a definite necessity, and the current vehicle that's there is not reliable and is probably a danger to even drive that thing. But I'm, I'm, I'm just speaking up for it, because they did give me a detailed overview of this, this particular vehicle. Now, the price increases, obviously, that has to do with, I'm assuming, whatever is going on in the market, but I would support this particular purchase with the increase because of the critical nature of the vehicle and the necessity for the vehicle.
And when will you have delivery?
It was said sometime in September.
It will be sometime in September.
That's the target date.
Okay.
And they can't raise it after that?
You mean after tonight, they cannot raise it?
No. That was, that was the full and absolute agreement.
I'm sorry. So tonight is the increase for the cabin chassis portion of this truck. But I can't honestly say that we're not going to incur another increase for the build portion. I'm hoping not, but just so we're clear, this is the last surcharge for the cabin chassis.
Okay. And what's the company again? I, I.
Freightliner, Wolverine Freightliner.
Okay.
For the cabin chassis, and then maintainer for the back half of the truck.
Okay, Wolverine, okay. Okay.
Again, these are very unusual times. Normally, you get something and it's good for two, two, three years. This unfortunately, with the economy and the supply chain as it is, things fluctuate from one day to the next.
All right, Counsel.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval to amend Resolution Number two oh two two dot one one four, Authorization to Pay Traffic Services Truck Invoice at Increased Price.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the amended Resolution Number two oh two two dot one one four, Authorization to Pay the Traffic Services Truck Invoice at the Increased Price as presented tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the Authorization to Purchase a Security Camera System for the Public Works Building.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. The city of Southfield has gone out for competitive bidding twice for the security cameras around the Public Works Facility. They include five cameras exterior, four cameras interior, for the safety of the workers and of the security of the equipment. The first bid, we, first time we went out for bid, we didn't receive a qualified bidder. We rebid it with some slight modifications to the type of camera and received actually four bids, very competitive. As you can see, there wasn't much difference between the top bidder and the low bidder. The lowest apparent respondent bidder is International Controls and Equipment out of Clinton Township, Michigan. Their bid is twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. We normally put in a contingency of seven point five percent regarding construction. Therefore, the total bid should not exceed thirty thousand eighty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Once approved, we're talking about, within a month, they will start construction and installation.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions? Okay, we prepared the vote?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the authorization for the security camera system for Public Works Building.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve the authorization to purchase security camera system for the Public Works Building as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Authorization to Expand the Transportation of Southfield Seniors, known as TOS, to include Lathrop Village residents in exchange for municipal and community credits.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening.
This item is to seek authorization to expand the TOS program to include the Lathrop Village area. With me tonight, a couple introductions. I have Madonna Van Fossen here from Smart. Talking loud enough? Okay, sorry. Madonna Van Fossen here from Smart, and then Angie Burgess, who is our Senior Adult Facility Coordinator, is here tonight from Parks and Recreation. As you know, TOS, the TOS program, Transportation of Southfield Seniors, is a program that is funded by TOS through their community and municipal credits and specialized services. And what that does is it transports our older adults and folks with disabilities to doctor's appointments, grocery stores, and a lot of our programs. We have, I would say, Angie, we've even had to hire some bus drivers here in the last month. Three new drivers. So our, our transportation program is going strong. Lathrop Village currently has thirty-five thousand dollars in municipal and community credits and is annually issued eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Currently, if we were to expand our program, those community credits and those dollars would be transferred into our account and our transportation fund. Just want to remind Counsel that the Lathrop Village area is within the Southfield boundaries. So we're not expanding our boundaries out at all. They're encompassed in our footprint. In this letter, I gave an example, if we were to, if we were to hire a bus driver and expand by a full day, it would be a little bit over four thousand dollars. I'm not saying that that's what we're going to have to do. We certainly have a number of bus drivers. We certainly would monitor that, and we will monitor that going forward. But we are encouraging Counsel to support this. I can answer any questions that you have, and of course, we have the guru of Smart here tonight with Madonna. But we can answer any questions that you, that you might have.
Thank you, Counsel. Councilman Brightwell?
In the write-up, you said ridership in, was, I guess, twenty twenty-one was one sixty per month. And then this year, twenty twenty-two, is two-ten per month. Is that, is that the number of people that actually utilize the service per month?
Yes, it is. And actually, that's kind of low, but the last two years, as you know, we've, we've all been going through the pandemic. We were, we were fortunate to have a number of buses. I know that I talked to a few people last week about this, but we've got currently, I believe we have eight buses. During the pandemic, we were able to have one driver per bus, and so they were able to have their own bus. That's the bus that they clean. That's the bus that they drove every single day. As we moved through the pandemic and folks started to feel more comfortable riding, our numbers started to increase. So you'll see another increase as we move forward. Our, our trips are, boy, I would, I would hesitate to say tripling, but I would probably say tripling. We provide transportation for all of our programs, so our trip program for seniors. And I know we have sold out for our last three or four field trips. So folks are coming out more, and these community and municipal credits help fund that transportation, both in the trips to the doctor's offices and in our programming.
Okay. Just one, what is the, who pays for the fuel for these vehicles?
I'm sorry?
Who pays for the fuel for these vehicles, and how is it paid for?
We do, yeah. We pay for that. We pay for the fuel.
And we charge it where?
Oh, boy, I don't have the account.
We charge it.
Within, yeah, within the funding, yes, within the funding that we receive.
Okay, so we, we pay the mobile or marathon, or whoever we use, out of funds, city of Southfield funds?
Right, it's funded by those community and municipal credits. So that funding source that comes pays for that fuel to allow us to have that transportation service.
Okay, and what we're getting from Lathrop should sort of balance this out, I guess?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
City of Lathrop Village has a little over four thousand people, and we would be bringing in about, was it eight thousand? Yeah, a little eighty-eight hundred dollars in those, in those credits each year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. What are the hours of this program? And then, do you serve us, the residents, seven days a week?
Currently, we are operating the program Monday through Friday from eight to four o'clock. I know that we have had some requests that we have gone ahead and, and made happen, that happen after four o'clock from time to time, but we really try and focus those doctor's appointments and those trips from eight to four o'clock. Before the pandemic, I know that I had talked with Counsel a great deal about expanding our transportation program past that five o'clock hour. We started to do that with some trips on Saturdays and Sundays where we'd go down to the Eastern Market and some other places. But as far as those single trips and doctor's appointments right now, they're Monday through Friday. I don't know if you would like to talk about the Flex program at all right now, or?
Do you want me to, or wait till?
We'll probably wait and then make a presentation about some new services coming before us from Smart. But just because we're Monday through Friday right now from eight to four does not mean that we can't expand that service. We certainly monitor this. We give quarterly reports through the budget process. Angie and her staff do an excellent job working with our budget analysts and providing those reports to Madonna in a timely fashion. So much like us monitoring how this Lathrop Village will roll out, we also monitor where it may be possible to expand our services, especially if we're hearing from our residents. But as they're just starting to come out right now and just, just starting to have an established comfort level, we'll certainly, we have communication. We have folks on the buses when we take our trips and when we take our programming out to the public. So we are in constant communication. And then our drivers are excellent, and they have a lot of, I know we, we had a great experience when we went on some pool tours, but they're very professional. They give a lot of assistance, and they communicate with our residents. So, and then they come back and communicate both with Angie and then our dispatcher as well. So if we hear that need, Councilwoman Banks, and if, if we do see a way to make that happen, we will.
Okay, and then what number, what telephone number can a senior dial to utilize this service?
Boy, you'd have to help me there, Angie. The phone number? It's the area code two four eight seven nine six four six five eight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Do we need to change our name to include Lathrop Village, or are we leaving it TOS?
Madonna says she would leave it. I, you know what? That's a really good question. I never thought about that. To be honest, when we receive phone calls from Lathrop Village right now, we transport them. This is formalizing the service and also us being able to financially glean those, those community municipal credits. So I don't see us changing our name anytime soon.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just got one.
Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, leave it Southfield.
Thank you, sir.
We're providing the service. Let's, let's leave it where it is. I was just, just a curious question. So like, if someone had a doctor's appointment tomorrow at nine AM and nobody else had a doctor's appointment or anywhere else to go, will we take the, take them in the van, the Smart vehicle, which holds a lot, a number of people, would, do we do individual runs like that?
As long as we can get the bus driver, we would try our best to make sure if we had somebody available to do that, that we would accommodate that person.
Okay. Do we try to ask them to, ask our seniors to maybe try to set their doctor's appointment times at around the same time?
Not necessarily, but we do ask that they give us two-day notice, two-business-day notice for wherever they want to go. And a lot of the dialysis patients, they already know that they're Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or what have you. So we do have some people that are on that regular schedule.
All right, great, thank you. Just, just good to know. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay. Are we prepared?
Madam President, I just, while Madonna is here from Smart, this afternoon, she was, there's a lot happening with Smart, new executive leadership, and today, we heard a lot of new innovation. We've agreed that we'll bring them in and work to promote the new product. We have the connector dial-a-ride, a new product called Flex, which sounds very innovative, using a greater application of technology to help to get to the point that Councilman Cruz is speaking of. And we'll work to message that throughout the community. They can't plug it, but there is, Smart does have a millage up for renewal this November. And we know day to day, we have residents using these programs. Our planner has led a very aggressive effort in rebuilding the infrastructure to support public transportation in this community. And when we talk about a sustainable Southfield, this is a critical part of that. Not all of us can afford, I don't think you can get a car anymore for three hundred dollars a month. I mean, some of these prices, so a lot more folks are reliant on public transportation than ever before, and we just need to support that infrastructure and the service delivery models. And I was really excited to hear what, some of these new product developments. It's great, you know, now that the pandemic is lessening its impact and getting our program back up and getting three new drivers is a big deal for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, are we prepared to vote?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to move approval of the Authorization to Expand the TOS program to include Lathrop Village residents in exchange for municipal and community credits.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the Authorization to Expand the Transportation of the Southfield Seniors to include Lathrop Village residents in exchange for municipal and community credits. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
The next item is for the Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Budget Adjustment to a Full-Time Employee in the Planning Department.
Thank you, Madam President. We're asking. We're asking for a budget adjustment to allow the planning department to merge two non-career employees and create a full-time clerical position. This was discussed as we were going through the budget process late in May, and as we were putting things together, it did not make the final budget. So what we have tonight is to basically for a net increase of $49,584 to fill the full-time clerical position in planning.
Okay. Council? Councilwoman Banks?
The salary for the position, is that include the benefits?
The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, Mr. Zorn, so these two positions that were merging right now, I'm assuming they're vacant right now?
No, the, one is, one individual is retiring and one position is filled, non-career.
Okay, so that individual that's left, I'm assuming it just moves to full-time? Is that what's happening?
The...
Through the chair, and again, this was discussed during our budget hearing, but we've had Ms. Swanson, who was a previous full-time employee, working part-time assisting with the Southfield City Center, and she has announced that she's ready to enjoy her full retirement, and we currently have a part-time 18-hour-per-week administrative assistant in the planning department. We'd like to merge those two part-time positions into one full-time position that will serve both those needs.
And so the, I know you read the numbers real quick for me, I didn't catch quite all of them, so what would this do in terms of the finances and benefits and everything? Does this give us a cost decrease or increase?
Well, the, you do have an increase, the net increase is the $49,584. With our non-career employees, we have only their wages, the FICA contribution-
Gotcha.
-and the cost of the one a week. This is primarily what we'd call the roll-ups to the base salary.
Okay, so, because if we did, if we kept the two, if we kept it under 23 hours a week for the two?
On the non-careers, the rules are up to 32 hours.
Thirty-two, right.
A week, and...
If I could, we've been averaging 18 hours a week per non-career part-time.
Okay. All right, I think that sounds, still sounds reasonable to me, I just wanted to know.
And there will be a reimbursement through the city center for part of that salary.
All right, great, thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else? Okay, council?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval for the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget adjustment to add a full-time employee in the planning department.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the adjustment to the 2022-2023 budget to add a full-time employee in the planning department. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Zorn, this is perhaps for Austin, I called him today about this, but we have a couple of times we have used fund balance, and I want to, and since I personally track fund balance a lot, from our Moody and Standard &amp; Poor's rating purposes, we have a certain percentage. Could you ask Mr. Michaels to furnish a list of how we've used fund balance this year, and how has that affected our ratio?
Yep, we can do that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the presentation and discussion regarding the rezoning request for Kiwi Hospitality LLC for rezoning of 1.41 acres of land to office service for the conversion of the existing five-story hotel to an assisted living facility.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll do a brief introduction, and Mr. Dowling can fill in the blanks. Dowling, sorry. Again, as you stated, this is a rezoning request only, for discussion purposes, to go from B3 general business to OS office service, conversion of an existing five-story hotel at the, to an assisted living and memory care facility. Again, this was the former Holiday Inn, which is now the Best Western Premier, and they've converted two-thirds of the former Holiday Inn. This is the rare five-story portion of the property located to the west of the Rotunda area, as shown in this photo. The site is currently zoned B3, it's in our technology corridor Telegraph. This is the specific site, you will be seeing if this rezoning goes forward, a site plan next month, but this is the general area that's being rezoned, and proposed improvements to the outdoor area. And Mr. Dowling is here to explain the rationale and business plan for developing this into a senior facility, memory care. Dowling?
Yes, Madam President, council, thank you for having me. My name is David Dowling, owner of Yukon Building and Land Development. We are seeking zoning and site plan approvals for an 85-unit bed senior assisted living memory care facility. The Franklin Senior Center Residence is located at 26620 Franklin Road, 48033. This existing five-story property was part of the Best Western Premier, a 206-room, 16-story located at 26555 Telegraph Road, finished and occupied in 2017. Also put online on this property was in 2020, was a two-story building, a 54-unit Best Western Executive Stay, now in operation. The last building on this property is the five-story building. It will be completely renovated into an 85-bed, single-room senior living residence. The building will be refitted with new electrical plant, including a generator system that will run the entire building and the entire operation. The entire domestic water system will be new, sprinklers and state-of-the-art fire system systems, HVAC systems. The air-conditioned rooms will be independently controlled, each unit with noise dampering and HEPA filter systems. All the requirements necessary to meet the state-certified licensed facility will be in place. The building will be 100% independent of all properties on-site. Each room is private with a full handicap bath. All rooms will have caregiver sink locations and closets for the residents. All rooms in the building are set up with Wi-Fi connections and smart systems, TVs, et cetera. The five-story building will have a newly constructed 5,000-square-foot dining and kitchen facility equipped with, to provide breakfast, lunch, dinner for the residents and the staff. The main dining will seat 75 guests. The kitchen and dining are attached directly to the existing, existing five-story building. There are also areas on each floor where the residents, which are more restricted, will have accommodations for eating and lodging. The exterior garden area will be open for the visiting guests, for the residents. This is a secured space fenced restricting others from entering the property or residents able to wander off. Notes from the operator. The kitchen will be staffed with a full-time chef onboard that works directly for the care, with the caregiver staff to construct three meals daily. Some clients require special dietary needs that will be tailored to address those issues. This facility operates 24 hours a day. In most cases, our residents will be in this facility until end of life. Between shaft, staff shifts, the operations will expect 55 full-time employees. This facility will operate completely self-contained. The building has a complete commercial laundry facility that will accommodate the general laundry and has the equipment to do so in small loads the service residents needs also. This operation will require a full-time cleaning and maintenance staff. This will also be certified by the state assisted living and memory care facilities with a licensed operator. The property will be owned by the same owner in the hotel properties and operated by a local operator. Marty currently owns and operates the Chester Street Residence located in Royal Oak. I've been in front of this board before with this particular property, back in 2018 with a La Quinta, that didn't work out with the owners. We've also came in in 2018 for an executive stay, which was going to be an extension of the 54 units that we did put in place. We found out later that the marketing didn't work for that large improvement, so the building has stayed idle until this point. We're respectfully asking if you can help us rezone the property so we can move forward with this opportunity.
And if I could, I believe this property was vacant six, eight more years prior to the Best Western Premier coming in. We have tried many different zoning tactics to try to encourage redevelopment. We have two-thirds of it redeveloped. As Mr. Dowling had stated, the marketing has changed. In order for them to provide a facilities for human care, they need the rezoning from B3 to OS. This has condominiumized the property, I believe?
Yes, it has.
And so we're only dealing with the 1.41 acres that this property would be located. It's only discussion tonight, it'll be coming back on the 25th for a public hearing on the rezoning. Should the rezoning go forward the following month, you'll, we'll get into the specifics of the site plan, but Mr. Dowling gave you an overview so you know what to anticipate, and we are supportive of this rezoning request.
Councilman Cruz?
Just to re-jaw my memory, is this connected to the hotel, the...
It's physically connected, but it, as far as the building, is completely separated from the other, other unit, as far as the way it's operated. The building actually has a connection, but it's walled off.
So it's, I guess I'm just thinking about safety of the seniors that might be coming in there.
I'm sorry?
Safety of the seniors that might be moving into this, you know, as opposed to the people that may just be staying overnight in the hotel, you know?
Right.
I just want to make sure it was a point where we know they're safe.
Right.
You know, that was...
The facility is a locked facility. Generally, when you have a senior citizen in this care, they're monitored, and you have to watch for their care because they wander.
Right.
And like I said, when you're talking about the garden facility on the exterior of the building, it's fenced off. It keeps people from coming into the facility, and it keeps people from leaving the facility. And it's all key, it's all key-coded.
Okay.
So any resident that comes in from the hotel couldn't even get into this building, nor could these folks get into the hotel, besides through the main lobby.
Okay, all right, good. And do we have a price point for the units at this, at this time, or we haven't gotten that far yet?
I'm looking at the marketing end of it. From what I've understood, it's anywhere between $45,000 and $6,000. But I'm not sure that can be discussed later in the planning end of it.
Okay. Those are the only questions I have.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. So you said that Kiwi Hospitality will own this property, and who, or what is the name of the company that will be managing it?
The company that'll be managing it is, his name is Marty Schaefer, and he owns the property over in Royal Oak. Let me get to the name for you. He owns the Chester Street Residence, which is online, you can take a look at his facility. Marty will be in our meetings moving forward to describe the operation through the planning sequences, through planning and also through the city council.
And Chester, Chesterfield Residence is a similar facility with memory care for seniors?
Similar, yes, ma'am.
So I'm assuming it's also similar to like a Sunrise facility?
I'm not familiar with the Sunrise facility.
I think it's called Sunrise.
Right, it's a similar facility.
Similar to a Sunrise?
Yeah, I don't want to say that Sunrise might be a higher level-
Well...
...but it's the same type of memory care facility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brighid?
What would be the staffing employees employed by this, the approximate number start, employed by this facility?
It's planned at 55 people. It's a, it's an evolving staff, because there's 24, it's open 24/7. So between maintenance and caregivers, general staff rotating through the, through the day evening.
Okay. And the number of units you said would be 180?
No, 85.
Eighty-five, okay.
Eighty-five beds, yes.
Okay. And then, has a market study been done on this to say that this is a, what, that this will work here at this particular location? You mentioned, you brought, you know, I'm kind of familiar with-
Right.
-this historical evolution of this particular place.
Yeah, the owners of the properties have done studies on the site, and they believe that it'll be very successful. It's a, it's a strong need in this particular area for this, for the area of Southfield.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions for?
Madam President?
This is discussion only, so...
I just want to, just remind council that this site is, it was a brownfield and is subject to PEA 210. I think the administration needs to, and we're not, we have no objections to this, but we negotiated a brownfield based on certain parameters, and I think I need to sit down with Ms. Freeman and do a review of what we approved and we made decisions based on a certain type of use. And I think that needs to be put under a microscope and reviewed. So I just, in fairness, I want council to know that that's going to take place.
Okay. Thank you. All right, no other questions for us tonight?
This will come back in two weeks for a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is also for presentation and discussion, and it's the existing EZ Storage Overlay Development District Agreement with the Southfield Road LLC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this, this item was before you a couple months ago for preliminary discussion prior to going through the zoning amendment, the PZR ODD 22-0003, petitioner Southfield Road LLC. Again, this is currently EZ Storage ODD, and the request is to amend the ODD of the existing overlay development agreement to allow for beauty salons as permitted uses. Currently, the ODD prohibits beauty salon uses. And we talked about how the business model has changed from the rapid turnover to more of these salon suites. I believe the property business owner was here previously, and she's available for any questions, but it's simply an amendment to allow this particular use on this particular site. We have vetted the, the site, the zoning, the parking. This is its current street view, there is one tenant space still available. Areas indicated in yellow would be approximately attributed to the salon space, and there's more than enough parking. We've reviewed the floor plan, which is more of the salon suite style, and Mr. Bill Bowman and the proprietor are here to fill us in a little bit and to answer any questions that the council may have. Again, this item would come back in two weeks for the public hearing, your final, final decision.
All right, thank you, Honorable Counsel, Mayor. Bill Bowman with EZ Storage, here with Niani Barrett, who's our, the tenant, who's driving us here to, to request this variance for the, for the space. And I think as we, Niani gave a great presentation last time and kind of told you how her business is just really pretty impressive stuff, and, but mainly it's how, we started out with 2,700 square feet, and I believe when we were initially talking about it, I think there was some concern about having, say, a 2,700-square-foot salon and the parking and the, and how that might work out. And honestly, we don't have, we wouldn't have the parking for a 2,700-square-foot salon. What we found ourselves with after getting Moneyball Sports, which is a great tenant, another entrepreneurial gentleman who's doing a great job, we, but he didn't need all 2,700 square feet, so we ended up with this little, you know, 925-square-foot space that it's kind of an interesting... that it's kind of an interesting space that also has lots of parking. So it's an ideal space for a small salon and gives Niani a great opportunity to expand her business in the corridor. So that's what we're, we're here making that request of you. Thank you.
And if I could, just for the record, this is not a variance. It's an amendment to allow this particular use to the existing ODD.
Right, because within the general overlay district, salons are allowed. It was just within our, our specific agreement that limited the use.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. So originally, the salon was going to be at the front of the building. Is it still being proposed there or?
Yeah, it's, yes, it's, you can see at the very front of the building where the parking, it's right in the small space. The Moneyball Sports is in the, that, the larger space. And the salon will be at the corner space in the front of the building.
And this, this is Southfield Road?
Okay, so what is the other yellow space? Is that where their parking would be?
Parking there and there. Yeah, we have 20 parking spaces allocated for this space.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you.
So they'll be back in two weeks for the actual public hearing and
Thank you again.
Your determination. Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next item, I'm actually very excited to introduce this for your consideration with your permission. You're familiar with the Overlay Development District. And you're familiar with the Residential Unit Development District, of which John Grayson McKinley came before you to give us the possibility for adaptive reuse of buildings. One of the things, areas that we've, through the process of our master plan update and through developer contact, we have identified some of our major mile corridors with many vacant or underutilized office buildings. And we find that the shallow lot depth, shallow depth lots in current zoning are not providing the types of innovative redevelopment that we'd like to see. So we're proposing a new overlay development district that we're coining Mixed Use Corridor District to permit moderate, moderate density multifamily residential uses with small-scale commercial uses and to provide middle housing, which is typically the four units to 12 units that many communities are in need of and our current zoning does not allow. We're proposing it along major thoroughfares such as 10 Mile Road, West 12 Mile, from Greenfield to Evergreen, and the intersection of West 9 Mile and Loser. Underlying zoning may vary, but the intent is to authorize the Mixed Use Corridor District regulations for the purposes of encouraging the use of land in accordance with the character, providing a buffer between adjoining non-residential uses to ensure new development and compatible in scale and to provide innovative development. We've had, one lot in particular was an office space that burnt to the ground. It's less than an acre. And the type of proposed higher-density residential doesn't fit any of our categories and therefore that property's been vacant for a couple of years. And there is a great need, especially on our eastern portion in our Orthodox Jewish community, for more housing and more walkable, higher-density. And these photos that are on this screen show the type of innovative, higher-density middle housing that could be, that could take place along our corridors. We've identified some specific areas as a starting point. As you recall, we started out with the Overlay Development District in a handful of places. And as, as that was, became successful, we expanded. So we're proposing, these are areas with shallower depth lots that have a number of underutilized or vacant office buildings with densities that are, don't fit our current zoning. West 10 Mile Road, West 9 Mile Road in Loser. And then we went out and actually vetted where other communities have similar type of zoning. This is a mixed-use development on Main Street in downtown Northville, where the first floor are commercial and retail spaces and the second floor is office use. And it's built right up within five feet of the front yard setback and it provides parking in the rear. But this has been a successful model in downtown Northville. Just a block or two further west is a new condominium attached townhouses. These are ranging from $1.1 million and above. They're built right to the front setback line and they provide an alternate types of housing within walking distance of their main downtown commercial corridor. Another area that we investigate is in Wicksum, which provides mixed-use two-story development built up close to the road with some outdoor seating, with parking in a, a general area to the rear of the property. But when you drive by it along the street, it's got that downtown feel. And then finally, we also looked at some live-work units in Birmingham. This one is also in Wald Lake, where proprietors have their small shops or offices on the first floor and then they go upstairs and live. This need has increased exponentially since COVID happened and people are working from home. But many proprietors, small businessmen, want to have their own sanctuary as far as an office and to get away from where they live every day. And we think that these, all these models can fit along our major corridors. And so we're proposing to add, again, this would be an overlay development district option. If a developer picks a site, they'd still have to come back before you through our typical rezoning and site plan review. But this allows for that flexibility for mixed-use, higher-density development, typically no more than two or three stories high. And then we're not putting any limitations on setbacks or parking as long as the site can meet the demands and needs of the particular uses. And I firmly believe that once we get this on the books, we will probably see a number of developments, especially on the east side of our corridors. There are a number of developers looking for this opportunity that they currently cannot develop under existing zoning. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that counsel may have.
Counsel, have any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Crowe, on, on your presentation, it says residential density. And reading through this, what, what is the, what's the standard residential density? Because I, this, this, your, your statement here said it will be determined by the planning commission. So is there a standard now with respect to residential density?
Well, we're, we're looking at probably anywhere from four to 12 units per acre, depending on. And when we say it'll be determined by the planning commission as a recommending body to counsel, but we don't want to put any specific limitations. For example, we might have a single, one single family per 9,000 square feet or 12,000 square feet. Those are typical single-family developments. And then we have some duplex densities, row housing up to four units. And then we go to low-density multifamily and high-rise. We really don't have that, what's termed as middle housing, that four to 12 units per acre. And we have 30-foot front yard setbacks, 25-foot rear yard setbacks. These lots are not deep enough to accommodate all of the conventional zoning dimension requirements. And therefore, you can only build two or three units and it just doesn't make it feasible if you're tearing down or renovating an older office building to get the density to make it worthwhile. And we've seen some, what I call, higher-density urban developments that you might find in Chicago or New York, where developers want to build that here in Southfield, but our zoning doesn't allow that. So again, this is overlay development district eligibility. Each project would have to stand on its own two legs. And we would determine the ultimate density based on the layout, size, and scale of the development.
Okay, well, the reason this, this sort of caught my attention because will, would this definition of density and/or what is permissible be determined by the personalities on that planning commission? Or would it, is there a certain standard that will, everybody would have to follow? This seemed to be falling into the category of being highly flexible. It all depends on the personalities.
That's right. And, and, well, ultimately, it's the council's final decision. The planning commission is only going to be a recommending body.
Right.
Similar to the way it works now. The EZ Storage was an overlay development district that allowed for mixed-use development with retail in the front and storage in the rear. We don't have it, we don't have, we didn't have a traditional zoning district that allowed that. It was either storage here, commercial here. And what that did was provide the flexibility for EZ Storage to come in and be developed on that specific site. And we've had Mr. Hassan Jawad's mixed-use development across the street. The overlay development district allowed for that higher-density mixed-use development. This is just taking these corridors with shallow lots to provide another innovative tool in our toolbox. And then each site would be scrutinized individually, first by the planning department, then the planning commission, then ultimately the council to say, in this particular case, we might have 12 units per acre. Another one might be eight units per acre. But it, it'll, it'll give you flexibility from traditional zoning that might say at maximum you have three units per acre on this, on this site.
Okay. The reason I said that from a standpoint that we normally, since I've been on council, we normally follow the recommendation of, of the planning commission? Typically, I mean, I couldn't say it's 100%. But I, but in reading through it, I just got the idea that, well, well. Okay, all right, we're good enough, all right.
Just a simple example, we might have a 30-foot front yard setback.
Right.
And if you have a lot that's only 80 feet deep and you have a 30-foot front yard setback and a 20-foot rear yard setback, that only gives you 50 feet of depth to develop. So when, when it says the planning commission will determine, the planning commission may say three feet front yard setback is more than sufficient to provide for a stoop or an outdoor seating in this particular case. It's a recommendation that comes to council. And council may say, three feet's a little bit tight, maybe we want five feet. And ultimately, that's what would be determined.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Crowe, I know that we've had a lot of discussions about this and it's welcome news to at least the developers that are fighting, ready to, to start. The question that I have is, it's a mixed-use corridor district. Does that mean that if somebody wanted to only build housing, that would be not allowed or that?
No, that would be permitted.
But it gives them multiple options for either?
Right, it could be strictly housing. Or it could be in the example of Wald Lake, where it's office on the first floor with housing above or retail. Small proprietors might have, it could be an insurance agent, an attorney. They could have a textile quilting business that they want to have a storefront and then live upstairs. In the old days, the butcher used to have his butcher shop on the first floor and live upstairs with his family. This is bringing that back with a modern twist to it. But if someone wanted to just strictly build residential, they could. If they wanted to build strictly retail, they could, or office. But this allows that flexibility for two to three stories of mixed use.
And if, as long as it's in this district, are there still going to be, there's not, that takes away the acreage limitations?
That's correct. We, if, if a site is zoned OS right now and they want to develop OS meeting all those guidelines, they can. But this gives them an extra option if they wanted to do the mixed-use development. So I eliminated like the one-acre minimum. Again, if the site can be developed to handle parking needs and, and, you know, air light and circulation, they could, they could develop it almost to the maximum. And each, each site and each project would be scrutinized separately and individually. And a development agreement would be established for that site only.
But they'd have to petition the city to become the Mixed Use Corridor District?
Similar to our rezoning of our ODD or RUD. So it's, it's an overlay. The underlying zoning stays in place. But should they want to take advantage of that option, then they would go through that process. The time is the same. The application fee is much higher because the city attorney and planning staff have a lot more work to do to develop that agreement. But the process would be 90 days. First month would be department review. The second month would be planning commission review, public hearing recommendation. And then council would be in the third month. This also, because it's an amendment that has at least two public hearings, so everybody within 350 feet would be notified and be able to weigh in on proposed developments.
Everyone within 300 feet of the 12 Mile, 10 Mile, and 9 Mile areas?
Of the specific site.
Oh, you're saying when, when they come?
Yeah, when they come. As you know, our public hearings are open to all. But it, but specific notices will go out on a site-by-site basis when an individual application comes in.
Okay. This is exciting. Thank you.
Madam President? I just want to say that this is very exciting. As we always talk about being landlocked here, we talk about creating opportunities for younger individuals to come and stay in the city. The examples that Planner Crowe put up here, I think as a younger person, it's very exciting to see this type of mixed use and to take advantage of some of our corridors and the opportunity that makes our city more hip.
Thank you. Mayor?
I too would concur with our clerk. This is very exciting. On the strip, as you know, we have some very tired buildings. They've been around for 60, 70 years. And this gives us a new opportunity to renew the corridor with more flexibility and really promise of new things. So thank you, Planner Crowe, for bringing this forward. I know we've been dancing around it for a while, but this is great.
Yeah. Anyone else, any other comments?
So this will come back in two weeks for a public hearing, your consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, our Hero Pay Stipend.
This is the hero item?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm, the hero item?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. This evening, thank, thank you, Madam President, I apologize for the delay. This evening, we're asking counsel to authorize Hero Pay for the remaining employees who've not been covered. Previously, the CARES Act covered our police, fire, paramedics, and our dispatchers. We're proposing a stipend in the amount of $1,000 to all active full-time employees and $500 to all active part-time employees hired before June 30th, 2021. The Hero Pay stipends would not be included in pensionable earnings. And any employee who's already received hazard pay under the CARES Act would not be eligible. The funding in the amount of $350,000 is, would be made available through a budget adjustment. And this is being charged to the $9.8 million we received from the American Rescues Plan Act of 2021.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Okay, are we prepared to vote?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of the Hero Pay stipend from the American Rescue Act, Plan Act of 2021 as presented.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 hero pay stipend as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next, we have the proposed revised procedure for the sale of vacant parcels.
Good evening, counsel. As you're aware, we have sold several building, buildable and non-buildable parcels over the past years. Most of the transactions went very well, but a few had some complications or sticking points. Administration and the attorney's office have met to try to resolve these and prevent them from occurring in the future. The first problem we ran into was incomplete or incorrect information. Somebody would say, I want to buy a parcel, but what they really want was their parents want to buy the parcel for them, or they and their fiancee want to buy the parcel. So that's why we've asked for an application to be filled out before anything goes to council. City Attorney's Office wrote an application to make sure that we have all the correct information. Second problem we've run into is the lack of a clear title. The parcels that we have were foreclosed. Those are the ones most likely to have title problems. We've had one resident who was intending to buy a parcel for her daughter to build a house, very disappointed when after council approved the sale, we had to go back and say, ah, we can't really sell you that because we don't have clear title. The idea here is to obtain clear title before we list anything for sale, so that if we offer something for sale, we know that we can sell it. The other problem we've had is we've not required potential buyers to make any investment before going before council. So sometimes, the administration and council has put time and effort into a sale, only to have the buyer just walk away at the end because he had no skin in the game, and it was more whimsical than serious. We're proposing to require a $1,000 application fee, which will apply to the purchase price if you purchase the parcel. If you don't, you lose it. A requirement that we've, we've installed has been building a home within a certain amount of time, because for us, for us, that's the big prize. The tax dollars, the new family, the more students going to school, that's what's worth it for us. The stick in that situation has been that we would take the home if you did not build it, or at least take back the property if you did not build the home within the right amount of time. 18 months in one, most instances, we did give someone who bought multiple parcels 24 months. But if we think about what's happening with tax foreclosures and how controversial taking people's homes are, if they haven't paid their taxes for years, it's probably not realistic to think that we're going to take someone's property because they missed a deadline or didn't get the home inspected in time. So what we're proposing instead is that if somebody buys a home and receives the discount for promising to build a home within a certain amount of time, that they post a cash bond of the difference between the true market value and what we're going to charge for the property. That way, we're not chasing them around saying, did you build your home? Did you get your permit? Double checking. It's really up to them to build the home within the right amount of time and then come to us and say, hey, here's my certificate of occupancy, I'd like my bond back. It, it totally shifts everything. So we're proposing to replace the home or property foreclosure clause with a bond that the buyer submits. We think those four changes will make our sales go a lot smoother and a lot faster.
Counsel, Councilman Brightwell?
John, I saw in here, I think this is the same one, I hope, I hope I'm not mixing them up, I'm, I'm mixing, I'm sorry, it's the next one coming up that dealt with the title work.
Yes, sir. The first agenda item proposes the plan, the structure for selling homes or parcels. The second one puts one of the steps into action.
Okay, Madam Chair, I jumped ahead on the...
I'll be ready for that, sir.
Okay. Where will, or who, or what department will be responsible for the bonds? Where they will be kept?
Well, the city attorney's office will very likely be collecting them. Now, as far as the internal mechanism, we haven't worked that out as of yet.
Okay, because we were looking for bonds that happened years ago, and we, nobody knew where they were. I'm just trying to put something, that way we'll know if we have in place, if it should be legal or the clerk, we would know that and it would be stated there or something.
That is a great question. I think Mr. Zorn can correct me if I'm wrong, but the problem in that instance was that we never really had a clear mechanism for the bond being forfeited.
Correct.
In this, so obviously, if you go back eight years, 10 years, 13 years, it's difficult to determine what the situation is. In this instance, we're talking very clear verbiage, you forfeit the bond if, in 18 months. So we will not run into that sort of problem. We have learned from that lesson.
Right, that's what I was going, I, I, I'm only asking because when I...
Nope, it's a good question.
When I know better, I do better.
We don't want to go down that road.
So that was a question we, we had in the past. I'm sorry, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. I was just going to say, when he mentioned the city attorney's office would keep the bond, I think I would sit down with fiscal service or whatever department is necessary.
Treasurers collect funds, of course.
So we know, number one, you know, that we would have a valid bond, and then also a way to keep track of it so that if someone wasn't, you know, present or it got extended, that it wouldn't be hard to find.
Okay, again, I'm just saying because we, we, we learn to do better from our past. And I know that we still have issues in other areas with bonds where we're still looking for them.
And I think, Madam President, to add to that, this is when technology comes into play, I do believe there is a caveat in BSNA that we can add, which will give us the reminder and the issuance. So that's the way of the captivation of that.
Beautiful, thank you.
Madam President, the city clerk is correct. I have seen bonds historically, what we're, the software we're using now, you can do it. You could also do it in Eden. I've also seen records going back to the 60s and the 70s where they were literally ledgered, and what happened was those ledgers were never put into a new system. That was part of, and we're actually going through a process and cleaning up those old files that have been copied and putting them into a system so they can be accounted for. It continues to be a large exercise.
Yep, thank you, thank you, and thank you, Madam Clerk. That's what I was really wanting to know, because if somebody forgets, then we'll have to deal with bonds as we have in the past, so, thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I thought bonds were held by the building department. Did that change?
It depends upon the type of the bonds. They're all, all recorded and held by our treasurer, the actual dollar amount, but you have bonds, engineering, planning, building. Engineering has 10-plus different types of bonds. But the bonds are accorded, recorded and accounted for in our BSNA system.
And Council President, if I could elaborate, by what, what I say dealing with the bonds, I should explain the bifurcation of the system as far as selling property. I handle it right up until you say, okay. The sale then goes to the city attorney's office for execution. So I may have been a little bit misleading, but that really is how the process works, and that's what I was trying to reflect.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else, any other comments? Councilman Mandelbaum?
And, and just to clarify, the, the vacant parcels are purchased through our purchasing department, or at least they're listed under the purchasing department? So is that who, a resident would contact?
Well, they're, they're listed under our purchasing department, and they, but they end up being said to me, and I help them with it.
Do you get a commission?
No.
I'd have to check.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell, did you have a question?
No, I didn't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel, are we prepared to vote?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of the proposed revised procedure for the sale of vacant parcels.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the proposed revised procedure for the sale of vacant parcels as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the request approval for title searches of vacant city-owned residential parcels listed for sale.
Thank you, Council President. This is a step to put in place what you've just approved. And just so I could elaborate a little bit on the problems, we had the resident who thought she had a parcel and didn't. We had another buyer who contacted me, and we tried to make it very clear that we've not done a title search, and his, his question was, why are you even listing this? You don't even know if you legally own it, and you're going to waste my time going through a sale, and then at the end maybe tell me I don't own it? So I thought that was a totally valid point, and that's why we'd like to at least get a title search on these parcels to make sure that we legally own them and can legally sell them. MS Title is a Southfield company. They have done this work for Southfield NRI. They provided a substantial discount, $800 down to $600, and they've offered the same discount to us. What we're looking at is clearing up all the titles on the 20 parcels we have listed for sale right now.
Okay.
If I could elaborate, it's hard to find a company to do this because it's not a house, which means the profit margin is very small, but it takes just about, it doesn't take just about, it takes just as much work to clear a title for a vacant lot as it does for a house. So that's why there was a challenge, and we were lucky to come across MS Title.
I agree. Any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
John, this is what I was intending to ask about previously. You said there were 20 pieces of land at 605 per one to do the title work on?
Yes, sir.
And that, that comes to $12,100, and you, you're asking for $13,000. And I didn't see where we were tacking on any contingencies. So where, where did the $13,000 come from?
I would have to check the math. It could well be a mathematical error, sir.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, how do we resolve this? You know, you know, mathematics is, is, you know, we're approving money, so, how, how critical is this for right now?
If we could err on the side of caution and approve the extra $100, and if it's not necessary, we won't use it. If it is necessary, I'll report back to you. But we have three people waiting to buy six parcels, and I hope we can get their process moving, sir.
Okay, well, the dollar amount is small, obviously, of $800, but, but, you know, we're just, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good idea, but, you know, quality control, you know?
Understand.
And so I will go ahead and have, and run this through. I won't object to this going forward.
You want to object to it, okay.
Clarification, Madam President. The fiscal impact of the 605 times the 20 equals $12,100. You spoke of the other amount. That's in the fiscal impact line of the write-up. However, in the actual resolution, it doesn't speak to that amount.
I... So what do you say?
Huh? I'm, I'm saying he was talking about changing the amount. It would only be in the fiscal impact, not the resolution.
Right, right.
No, the recommended resolution says $13,100.
Right, I'm sorry, for that, I'm sorry, it should be the 12,000. It's a change of the amount. So if you went the 605 plus the contingency.
Okay.
So if you went the 605 times the 20 properties, that's 12,100, then if you add the 25% contingency, which generally happens, that would be...
Well, it, it, it's, it's okay. Well, I'm not objecting to it. I'm, I'm going with this the way, where it's written.
We're just asking what would you like, so we can come up with a resolution, so the individuals now that are waiting to purchase this property won't back out, so...
Okay, no, I, I said, this, it's okay, it is written, and whatever is a error, and, and John, we take his word for it, he will come back to us and we didn't need this money or whatever, and just get it straight. But it, it's, it's written, I'll go along with it. I won't object, and we just go ahead and pass it as is.
Okay.
Okay. Anyway, I'm...
Well, it, it should be 12, $12,100.
Plus the contingency.
Plus the contingency.
Yeah, the 20% more than, than what's listed here also, if it's 20% contingency.
Well, I mean, I don't know what the contingency would be. My, my original point was that if we wanted to add, that if we wanted to be exact, we could have added the contingency fee to the 20 vacant lots times the $605. That was my original point.
Or do the 12, 1 plus contingency of whatever the percentage is.
Of 100. That would be a reasonable solution, Council President, thank you.
20%, it's about 1,400.
Yeah, a little bit higher.
So, I'm, I'm trying to just be very agreeable here. Just pass it as is. We realize that the numbers are off, but the number is, the dollar amount is...
$100, correct.
Yeah, and so we just pass it as is, and John, we trust him. He will come back to us and, and give us the, the correct...
And I will report back to council, thank you.
You could just send it to us, email it.
Yeah, and you want a motion, Madam Chair?
Yeah, well, it'll be a part of our, it has to be a part of the motion.
What?
What you, what you're saying?
What I just said? I pass it as is.
Oh, okay, you're going to pass it as is?
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Well, let's, let's hear a motion.
I move that we approve the request approval for the title searches of vacant city-owned residential parcels listed for sale.
Support?
As presented.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the requested approval for title searches of vacant city-owned residential parcels listed for sale as presented.
Madam President, I'd just add that more than likely, there are a number of vacant lots in the city that are on the tax foreclosure list, and if they don't go at auction, they usually revert to the city by December. So this is going to be an ongoing thing, most likely given the history of the past.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
There goes your commission.
Counsel, I would like to take counsel president privilege. We have a resident that has been with us all evening, who is new to our processes. She was not here at the beginning of the meeting to sign up under communications, but she would like to speak to us this evening. Her name is Ms. Jerry Bell. Would you please come forward? And you'll have three minutes to speak, Mayor.
Thank you, my name is Jerry Bell. I live in Pheasant Run Association, part of Pheasant Run Association.
Can you put the mic?
Put your mic down.
Okay, I'll repeat what I said. I'm Jerry Bell, and I live in Pheasant Run, part of Pheasant Run Association, and we had some, we've been kind of like been patiently at our meetings, association meetings. We've been discussing our roads, and we know that we have to go to a different department to get to the big streets like Mount Vernon. We've talked about that before. Our main concern is our residential street. I live on Merrill, which is right off of Rutland, and Rutland on the opposite side, they got it, they got new roads put down on Rutland last year, and then they came back this year and did another part of it, and we've been complaining for like five years now that our roads, on our residential street, we have some, 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 like Merrill Street and all around in our neighborhood, that's so bad that you have to kind of like go around, you think you're going to fall in a ditch or whatever. And we've been complaining, trying to get it, I've even met the mayor one time at the beautiful, I don't know if he remembers me, and I was talking to him about it, but... But it just seemed like we've been waiting so patiently. We keep saying that, they keep telling us that there's no money in the budget. And as I sit here in this meeting, listening to all this money being spent or whatever, I know you have certain things that you do have to apply it to or whatever. But it just seems like, you know, we're property taxpayers like everybody else and we want something done to our residential roads too. Because ours is like horrible, you know, just pitiful. And then I was also told that, well, we kind of like fix the ones that had problems with people, have leaks in their basement because they're, the pipes or whatever. And we have people in our subdivision that has, my effect, myself, my husband, me and my husband, just the last rain had, we had water come in our basement. So we hear all these excuses and we've been waiting, like I say, for five years. And we just want to know how long is it going to take for us to get ours? Just because we live at Nine Mile, it seems like everybody else, you know, get theirs fixed and whatever and all around us. It just, can we just find out, finally just get some, something done to our roads? We just want our streets to be beautiful like everybody else's. So thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you. Okay. Okay. We did take notes too, so thank you. Next, we are under the council portion. Council, I'll start with you, Ms. Banks.
Thank you. There is a development off of Lozer Road near Nine Mile. Brand-new homes or condos that are going up. Is there a way that council can get a report on the property? I know myself personally, I receive telephone calls on who can we contact regarding these homes, condos? And just today I went over there to see if there was a phone number or anything and we can't find anything. So someone must have some information on this that we can share with the council. Well, you want to do it now or later?
It's a Deer Park.
It's a what?
And I have had the same inquiries. And so just recently, the developer dropped off a packet of multiple copies. I'll make sure the council gets them.
Thank you. And there'll be information as to who they can contact if they're interested?
Exactly.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
May I, Mr. Mayor, you also recommended that they put a sign in front of the bill.
Yeah, I, you know, it's been a little frustrating because, again, as we talked about with McKinley, there are people that want to stay in the city. They want a condo, they want a first-floor master, they don't want the yard. And so this was approved by council quite some time ago, this project. COVID delayed other cost issues with construction costs. And then they had a technical, somebody hacked the company's computers, one thing after another. Anyhow, I have talked to them about marketing that we've had quite a few calls about this complex by Southfield residents who want to stay in the city and are just looking for a different product.
Yeah, well, and it's going to be beautiful, beautiful. And, excuse me, it looks like there's going to be quite a few homes there. And I feel sorry for the residents that presently live there because people keep driving down the street. Then they're going into their driveway to make a turnaround to come back out to Lozer. So anyways, thank you. Also, is there a way that someone can go and visit Ms. Bell's street? I think she said mural? Just to see, I mean, if the, if the street isn't that bad of shape, is there any way we can do like a, what do you call it? A patch? Wait, what do you call it?
Cement patch.
Oh, it's a cement street?
It's, I believe so.
Oh, I don't know if it's a cement street or paved, but can we patch the potholes or whatever that are there?
Just as a reminder, since two thousand and eight, we've been doing a conditional assessment on all of our streets. That Pacer rating, which became state law in two thousand and eighteen, becomes the gauge for a lot of our investments in our streets. The technique that we've embarked on is maintain and preserve what you have.
Right.
And some of the worst get a little worse before you can get to them. And if you recall, the conditional assessment we presented, I believe fall of twenty or twenty-one, we gave council the Transportation Asset Management Plan that is available on the website as well as future road projects. We were moving the needle in the right direction. There was discussion earlier about another million dollars going into roads. And remind you, each mile, one lane, new concrete asphalt. We're now experiencing about one point one million, one lane, one mile. I will have someone from Public Works Engineering go out and review that. I know as we recently, as a week ago Friday, the mayor and Patrick Ryan, our Department of Public Works Director, spent time out on individual streets. The better part of a Friday afternoon going through the worst of the worst. We're still trying to identify additional funding sources. For as much rhetoric as the state has had about roads, it really has not translated to a modification into the Act fifty-one formula, which is our primarily funding source for roads. And the governor's been a strong advocate of that. But the funding formula needs to be recognized what our needs are locally. The focus tends to be on state, federal roads. And most, a residential street is not going to score in that federal aid process. I've said to this council, the most recent federal aid committee, after the passage of the infrastructure legislation, the federal aid committee of Oakland County actually had a decrease in funding. Now, so we've got challenges. And again, the road funding, I've, in my career, I've been hearing this since Governor Blanchard, going back to the late eighties. And it just, it just doesn't happen. And I know gas prices are outrageously high. When I hear people talking about gas tax holidays, you will decimate all funding to local roads. Remind you, that's, we don't use general property tax dollars to pay for the maintenance of our roads, the plowing, the cleaning, the sweeping, the pothole patching. We use Act fifty-one formulas here. We collect one mil for local roads. For our local roads, that used to generate, prior to the Great Recession, three point five million a year, a property tax base. When it decreased to two point two, it lost a billion dollars or a million dollars in levy. And so we've got challenges. We have been incredibly fortunate in spring of fourteen, when we passed the road bond millage. That gave us, we've made over a hundred million dollars. We've leveraged another thirty million dollars in federal aid, but there's still a tremendous amount of work. And I, every day, you know, we're getting three to five complaints about roads. And we continue to stay at it and work at it and try to find creative ways. Council leadership's aware of, I'm trying to work our way through some old TIF, LDFA funds. There's one concept. And we've also leveraged our water sewer funds to help us get more done for our roads. Since fourteen, you've averaged over thirty-five million a year in road investment. And I think that's a credit to this council, but there's still an awful lot more to do. And I can tell you, we're not alone. I talked to folks at Farmington Hills, Nova, we're all, we're all trying to stretch our road dollars. But I will have someone out to physically inspect that road.
And I think that's fair. And who knows, there may be a pothole or two that can be fixed.
Certainly.
And also, if my memory is correct, we also saw a matrix map that where the different sections were identified when they might, when we might address the roads. So maybe we can look on that to see where does Merrill fall?
Yes.
And we can also inform Ms. Bell that on this year, you know, this is what we're proposing at least. And also, with reference to roads, Ms. Littleton, I said, I think she said she lived on Adrian. She said their roads were also extremely terrible. So if someone can go visit that area to confirm.
I can vouch for that one.
What?
I can vouch for that one.
Well.
That's already been, that's already been done.
She said Adrian was terrible.
They are terrible.
And so I don't know if we can fix the potholes or again, where does Adrian fall on that list to be?
When council, and thus the letter that she copied, when council approved the extra money last fall, we finished Mount Vernon. And then we went north of Lincoln and then the money ran out. Slated was to go below Lincoln and do those streets that hadn't been done by the water or the sewer and storm separation. So they're very much on the list. And again, I reminded Patrick Ryan of our promises to work in that area.
Well, I think, I think we owe Ms. Littleton also just a communication. Or if someone could let me know and, you know, I will go and, you know, talk to her about.
If you can share her name and address, I'll have community relations respond.
She was here tonight.
Ms., yeah.
Ms. Littleton on Adrian, so I don't know.
If I may, I, she, because I live in the neighborhood, I'm in frequent communication with her as well. I know she speaks to the mayor, but she does call me every few weeks to try and get an update. And we have been working with administration on trying to find some, some funding for that.
So we've got two streets, Merrill and Adrian. And then also, when this.
Ms. Banks, it's much more than that, though.
Well, I know, but these are the.
It's Alta Vista. I mean, all of these concrete streets are bad, below, below Lincoln.
Can you patch concrete like you can asphalt? I don't know.
They're concrete.
Well, I know, but I don't know. Is there, is, you can, is there some type of temporary patch for concrete? I don't know.
You can patch, you can patch a lot of things. This is going to just come down to cost.
Okay.
I mean, you got to have money to pay for.
Right, okay, okay. I didn't, okay. And then Ms. Kaplan, who came before us this evening, I guess to our attorney, can we, can we send her a letter? Or let her, the communication that you're going to send to us? Can we also, can we also forward that to Ms. Kaplan?
I will revise what I did send to council, because I want to just be very clear with her. And also I want to include Chief Barron on this and see, well, actually it was more than Chief Barron, it was Officer Pate, Sergeant Teresa Young. So there were a lot of officers that, when I called the meeting earlier this week and we talked about it, and of course, there's the communication with the other residents. So what I will do is I will draft something and then I'm going to talk with Chief Barron's staff. And then I'll send something possibly to both of them and not just one, because I think it's something that the police, you know, they're trying, but they are at an impasse. But yes, well, I'll send her something once I meet with Chief Barron or whoever has been communicating with her the most.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
And I'd like to add, Ms. King, can you emphasize with her, because this is the complaint from the police department, that she has not called the police when these things, these things are taking place? So there's, you know, they have to respond, but if she hasn't called, then how are they going to respond?
Yes, they did go out this week. I believe it was Sergeant Young that went out this week. And they said, can you make a recording? So I will make sure that some type of communication goes out to her.
Thank you. And that's all. Thank you. Councilman Cruz.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just two things I want to mention, or maybe even a request of the, our manager and the council. But one of the things that was mentioned early in the public comments was about microaggressions. And so, you know, since we have taken the step to hire someone in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion for the city and the community, I thought it might be a good time that maybe we ask her to come before council and give us a brief presentation on maybe kind of what kind of things she has going on and has been able to accomplish at this point, just so that we know, you know, that this was a worthwhile venture, which I think we all believe that we did, it is. It's just, you know, people, if you don't report back sometimes, you know, or hear back, you don't, you're saying, what are they doing? So I don't want that to be the case. And see if there's any additional help or whatnot that we can provide in terms of reaching out community-wise or otherwise and so forth. So if that's something you can put on a future agenda, working with Madam President here, that would be great. And thank Mr. Keeler for bringing that up.
And if I may, I would like to take it even a step further. If we could ask her if she would just critique the council, if she could watch our meetings and maybe give us a personal response as to how we could improve.
Certainly.
I'm always looking for ways to improve.
And I think that's, that was kind of the, the statement that was made was kind of about microaggressions going both ways. So, you know, I mean, I think I'm the nicest guy in the world, but you never know, you know, it might come off different. Or you could say something that might not be, that may be out of turn and so forth. So I'd rather be corrected than continue, you know, saying something or doing something that doesn't seem appropriate. So that was one of the things. The other, the other thing that I wanted to ask Madam President was that we could, as a council, maybe just start talking about the idea of replacement of council members. If, for instance, people retire, if they leave, for whatever reasons, that, you know, we may have vacancies. I don't think we have anything written officially on how we've done it. And I know that over the, in the past, it seems like it's been done in different ways. And so, I mean, if I may correct, please correct me. But I know we've sometimes done interviews, we've sometimes done last highest vote getter, things like that. And I think that we should be more proactive on something like that, because we don't want to get into a position where this council becomes stagnant or, you know, at a point where we can't get majority votes because we got an even number of people or something like that. So, you know, if we could maybe suggest how we can go about that.
I was just listening to you and what I'm thinking is, you're part of the legislative committee?
Yes.
Would you take that, if I asked you to take that on and bring something back to us? Because legal is already.
Chair is over there.
I'm listening.
But, I mean, but I have no problem. I just, you know, but, but he's the chair, so I don't want to.
Right.
I'm to the chair. I think we already have something in place.
No, we don't. There is the council has full autonomy to decide how they want to go about picking a council member. Over the last couple of years, it's went by the last vote getter, is this past thing, this past vacancy, it just went by whoever's a past council person. Before, it's been a practice where council has conducted interviews. But there is nothing in policy form that suggests that council follows one way of selecting an appointment to a council person.
No, but it does address the fact that if there is a vacancy, council has X number of days to either appoint, hold a special election and or, there's.
There's language followed under the Home Rule City Charter. But what Dr. Cruz was speaking to is the policy of which council members pick a vacancy, which that policy doesn't exist. We have guidelines to if the time period of picking one and then having a special election and in accordance with the state law. But there is nothing on the books with the city of Southfield internally on a mechanism in picking a council member. Council members now have full autonomy. If they just decide to make a motion for one person and they got the votes, that can happen. No application process or anything that, like that is on the books as far as guiding council on how they fill vacancies.
So I would like to make a recommendation that we send it to legislation, since we have our chair and another member. And our attorney is on that committee as well. And then you guys bring us something back. You know, the urgency or the importance of it, so.
Well, I mean, we don't have an election this year going on, but at least not on council, but there's still the potential of vacancies taking place this year.
If it's possible.
Yes.
It's possible.
And that's all I had for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I just wanted to, three things. The first is that if you haven't gone to the city's website, the online voting for the photo prize is currently active. There are some great photos that were taken by Southfield residents, or if you worked here. But there were over 150 submissions and there's 25 finalists that are currently on display. And then the voting does take place online, so it can be fair as only one IP address is allowed to vote. Also tomorrow, we will have our gazebo concerts at the Berg from, that takes place from seven to eight thirty. Those are always very fun, well-attended outdoor concerts. And then this Thursday, we continue our monthly Eat to the Beat here in front of City Hall from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They have food trucks, they have games. I know the Southfield Community Cup will be continuing to be out there. But it's, they'll have live music, so if you happen to be in the neighborhood and want to take a quick, you know, take a lunch break from 11:00 to 2:00, Eat to the Beat will be right here in front of City Hall. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
To continue with my veterans, July fourteenth from nine AM to three PM, the Veteran Services of Open County will be providing a small business boot camp for veterans. And this is to teach veterans that or inform them how to start a business, marketing your business, resources for hiring veterans, business finance 101, and numerous other things. It'd be pretty much is, is free, but you have to register. And you would register with the Veteran Services Small Business Boot Camp. It's a pretty, a pretty long address, email address here. But what I will do, I will have a flyer printed up and replaced in the information of the lobby, in the information box there in the lobby. The city clerk graciously got these copies made here, so I will make sure they're in the, in the information box in the lobby. This is for the July fourteenth. It's at the, it's in Pontiac. It will be in the United Wholesale Marketing, United Wholesale Mortgages Sports Complex. That's at eight six seven South Boulevard in Pontiac. And feel free to call me here at City Hall, two four eight seven nine six five one five zero. And I will obviously relay that info to you. And I just want to remind individuals, since Colonel Jefferson May came up again today, that with the Library of Congress, there is a, almost an hour, two, a two-hour interview with him that's at the Library of Congress. I conducted that interview several years ago as chair of the Veterans Commission. And the Library of Congress asked me, since we had done at that point about 220 interviews here in Southfield, this is before I got, got on council, they asked me for a, to recommend a significant interview. Colonel Jefferson interview was a significant one and they highlighted that interview during that year. And I just want, want everyone to, everyone to pretty much just take a look at it. He tells a very compelling story of his life and also when he was a prisoner of war in, in Germany. He got shot down. But if you recall the movie Red Tail, he was the young man that actually got shot down. So that was Jefferson, Colonel Jefferson life story. But it's a significant interview. And it's a short email address, www.loc, which is Library of Congress.gov. And once you get to the site, just do a search for the Veteran History Project, that's VHP. And once you get to that particular project, you can just type in Jefferson's name, last name, first name. Just type in Jefferson, all the Jeffersons will pop up. Or you can search for Southfield. And about 300 interviews from the city of South, was conducted by the Veteran History Project from the city of Southfield. The interviews there, all the interviews we did would pop up and we did them for Bloomfield, Saginaw. We even had people come in from Ohio. We did Detroit. You name it, we did interviews of those veterans. They would come to the Southfield Library on a designated day and we would interview them. And I think Jefferson interview is probably about two hours long, so it's a very good history lesson. And also it's a very good testimonial to a young man who did a lot for his country at that point in time. So, and if you have questions about the Veteran History Project, you can call me, call me here at the City Hall also about that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. I would just follow up and say I'd be happy to take that up in legislative committee looking at a process for replacing vacancies on the council. I know this is, we've kind of talked about it before, but it may be also good to look at our charter as a whole, as this is now the third charter, potential charter change that we've talked about since I've been on council. And so that might be also something we can talk about in legislative committees.
It wouldn't be a charter change. It's just a procedure of how council would go about picking the candidates. It's not, it wouldn't be a charter amendment.
The.
What Councilman Cruz brought up. That was just, it would, that would just be a policy.
Okay. I don't have anything else to add. Councilwoman Banks kind of took the two things that I was thinking about, replying to Mrs. Kaplan about the situation with the door and then Ms. Bell in the back, the things with the road. Our city administrator brought up a good point about Act 51. It certainly hobbles a lot of the communities in the southeast Michigan area. Certainly hope our, our state legislators can work on a solution to that at some point. So beyond that, that is all I have.
Thank you. I do want to ask, since I'm asking legislation to take on some things, could you also work with our legal department on drafting something to the state? Because I know it's above the, the city, but where they would allow the cities to, for meetings because of COVID, there are people that they're, they're healthy, they can do things, but they can't attend the meetings because they're quarantining. But there's nothing physically wrong with them. They could attend virtually. We, we virtually held meetings during the COVID pandemic. But as it stands today, we're not allowed to have someone that's being quarantined be a part of the meeting. They cannot join us virtually. I'm just wondering, is there a way to address that? And I know it would have to come from the state or federal, I don't know. But I can see that being an issue somewhere down the road.
That is absolutely something that we can address and we can talk about putting something together to take to the state. I know when all the requirements and the legislation that allowed us to do things virtually was ending, I know there was a conversation about ways that we can keep things going if there's, you know, issues that come up again. Hopefully never, but if another situation that prevents meetings from happening in person comes up again, at the time, there was not an appetite from the majority, majority party in Lansing to take up that, that, that legislation. But it's still, it's definitely a conversation that needs to be had and it's definitely good to have communities always speak up and say, these are the issues that we are addressing. And it's something that I'm sure we can work with groups like the Michigan Municipal League to be able to advocate with us to make these kind of changes because these are things that are coming up as we are, you know, moving forward in the post-COVID world.
Thank you. Thank you. I have nothing else this evening. Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to pass out an invitation. Oops, excuse me. Perhaps if you came through the lobby this evening, you saw that there is a new art display, which will be up for, for three months. These are two local artists, Southfield residents, Carolyn Izan and Priscilla Pfeifer. Their works will be again here through September. The Art Commission will continue to look for local artists to continue the lobby displays. There will be an opportunity this Friday night at 6:00 PM, so thus an invitation is going to each of you for, to meet the, the artists in the lobby. There'll be an artist reception with light refreshments Friday at 6:00 PM. Right out in our lobby. So you're, if you're available, you're invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Is some of this artwork for sale?
It's all for sale.
Is there a price on the pieces?
The prices, Ms. Pfeifer didn't get in today to put her tags on.
Okay.
Ms. Izan did. And it's a description of the art, the title and the price.
Because the new pieces, they are very vibrant and beautiful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator?
I have no more items, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Thank you. I have no more items to discuss either.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Just a few items this evening. The Wildlife Commission language was accepted, so it will be on the ballot in November, for November eighth right now. So that's good news to hear. Also, we do have an election three weeks from tomorrow. Currently, right now, we have sent out 10,450 absentee ballots and have received 3,460 back. Just a reminder to all of our residents that do not want to wait in a line, I would encourage you not to wait to the last minute to vote absentee. We are open daily from eight AM to five PM and then we will be open this Saturday before the election from seven AM to three PM. So if you don't want to get in a line, please come now. And also, just a reminder for the primary elections, they are, you cannot split your ballot. You have to either vote on the Republican side or the Democratic side. That does not mean that that is your party of choice. That's just your party of preference for this particular ballot. There's been a lot of miscommunication. The state of Michigan does not require you to register for any political party to vote in a primary, so that is some things that people have been asking. It's just your preference that day of your ballot. If you decide that your preference is to vote one, one party and then tomorrow you decide it's different, you still have autonomy now to submit and say you scored your ballot. So again, encourage your neighbors, your friends, other Southfield residents to take part and engage in your civic duty and voting on Tuesday, August the second. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurers not here, planner. City Assessor?
Good evening. I just have a quick announcement. The 2022, the 2022 July Board of Review will be in session next Tuesday, July nineteenth, between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM at the Assessor's Office. The meeting is held in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, so members of the public are allowed to attend. The board meets to correct qualified errors and grant disabled veteran exemptions and poverty exemptions. So I'd like to remind all disabled veterans and persons at the poverty guideline level to contact the Assessor's Office by the end of the week to file the appropriate paperwork. Numbers, two four eight seven nine six five two three zero. Thanks.
Thank you. No one's here from engineering. Okay. We have nothing to schedule. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, I definitely appreciate the art that, that is in the lobby. And I've been a longtime fan of art. As a matter of fact, I just happened to get here early today and I went around the lobby looking at the, the art and will this be a recurring, you know, exhibit throughout the year for artists and or artists to use the lobby? Is that, is that one of your programs for your art commission?
Well, we go back a little ways. The clerk and I decided that the lobby needed some renewal. And as a matter of fact, you were involved in.
Sure.
The award wall was very outdated.
Right.
So this has been a multi-year project. We had a display, the first display was celebrating the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. And then we went into Black History Month and then we've started doing local artists. I don't, this is the Art Commission who vets the artists are, and they pick the two individuals and are open to anyone who wants to display their art.
Okay, so it will be recurring based on?
That's our plan unless there's some object, I don't know if anybody has an objection. But we've, we get a lot of traffic in the lobby and especially right now with people paying their taxes and coming to absentee ballot, submit their ballots or apply for them. So every day there's, there's a lot of traffic and I think it's.
No, it's a good idea.
You know, the lobby's looking a lot better.
Yeah. This is a very good idea. I think it obviously, you know, displays an artist's work, but I think it does a lot for the beautification of the lobby and, and City Hall to, to look very, you know, very modern and or on, on top of things. And I come back to, a gentleman once said, and I, and he's a very respected gentleman, that if you had walked into City Hall, Southfield City Hall, you would not know that this was a majority black city. So, but I think now that, that we are paying attention to the lobby and it's a recurring theme, but it's not, that's not the, the purpose of it. But, but anyway, you get a feel for the, there's a consciousness of the, the, the philosophy of, of the city is, is obviously being, being displayed. I really appreciate it and I appreciate the artists that they have been selected. And they definitely have been good. And I've attended, the last time we had a gentleman, the display and his art. So, so this, this is a worthwhile project. I just, I'm, I'm supportive of it be reoccurring whenever, you know, the time requires it.
Sure. Well, thank you for that. I'll pass it, your comments on to the Art Commission.
Thanks.
Thank you. We have nothing to schedule?
I just want, Madam President, if I could, I just wanted to add on to what Mr. Brightwell was saying, Councilman Brightwell. And want to thank Mayor Seiver and Clerk Hawkins, who picked out a lot of new things for the lobby area already. And this just adds to it, to the tapestry of, of all the fine, different types of art forms that we can provide. And so I think you're right, Councilman Brightwell, that it does make this feel more welcoming to anybody who walks in the door because you just have a better, it just gives a sense of feeling to it. So I'm not a, not an art person, but I feel better coming in here now. And I've been working here for about nine years, eight, nine years now. So thank you both for your leadership in that too. So I just want to add.
We're still working on some new things. We're gonna go rug shopping soon, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. There's nothing else to schedule? I declare this meeting adjourned. I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.